How many do you drink a day? How many do you drink a day?
I don't have them at home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I drink two cups of coffee every day, though.
Well, that's probably why you're so hyper.
Yeah.
You got all that energy, sir.
Drink two cups of coffee every day. Whatever energy drinks I can get my hands on.
Counsel, we're live and recording.
I will call back to order the strategic planning session. It is June 21st and it's 9:03 a.m. Do we need to do roll call and all that?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Leonard. Councilman Gleason.
Present.
Councilmember Werner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You? I will omit the welcome today because nobody's here unless Gary, do you want to say welcome? No? Okay. All right, let's rock and roll.
Good morning. Everybody get a good night's sleep. I want to tell you, last night I went home and I did a little bit of work on the presentation and I have to tell you, I'm very impressed with the work that you all did yesterday. And I want to show you what you did as soon as I get the clicker to work.
I brushed my teeth with my other hand. It didn't go too well.
All right, all right, so while we're getting the clicker to work. Oh, okay, we're good. How'd it go?
Kind of like my handwriting, I guess.
Terrible, terrible.
Mine was good.
I actually.
This is okay. Oh, yeah, I think we're, oh.
I thought I used both hands before and then I actually tried it and no, I only used one hand.
Any other experiences?
I have an electric toothbrush.
How'd it go?
Cross this way, it's easy. You try to do like this.
But the dentist says you're supposed to do it this way, not this way. So it's, yeah, it's really tough. Um, well, let's look at today's agenda. So we're going to do a recap of yesterday's work. We will do any items that are unfinished from day one, but as it turns out, we finished day one, so I think we're really good. Um, I'll ask for questions, comments, and concerns after all of that work. Today, we're going to identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges. Some of you may be familiar with the organizational behavior practice called SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I don't use SWOT with municipal work because there is no threat to your authority as a municipality. Nobody can, well, maybe the federal government can come in with armed guards and all that, but you control your own destiny totally and completely as a municipality. Now, you do have issues you have to deal with. You've got to deal with county regulations, state law, federal regulations, but there is no threat to make the city of Westlake go away. You have a charter. You are recognized by the state of Florida. So I don't use threats when I work with municipalities. I do use threats when I work with businesses. So we'll identify strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and what I call challenges today. As I mentioned yesterday, we're going to do some identification of SMART goals. This will be the majority of our work today. You asked me to put a public comment in after the SMART goal, so that's when we'll ask for the first round of public comment. We will identify and set consensus priorities based upon the work that we do with the SMART goals. We'll wrap up, we'll talk about the next steps, we'll have council comments, and we'll have public comments. And then we'll adjourn. You probably not want to know when. Uh, my goal will be no later than 1 o'clock. All right, but we'll see how it goes. So here's the recap of day one. This is the work you did yesterday. This is what I'm so impressed about. We discussed strategic planning and strategic thinking. We reviewed the environmental scan of the community. We discussed city finances and budget trends. We studied building permit statistics. We reviewed PBSO statistics. We discussed the comprehensive planning process. We heard the summary of elected officials and community engagement themes. We crafted a vision. We crafted a mission. And we crafted core values. You did great work. You should be pleased. I mean, I think, I think a round of applause is appropriate. All right. Hopefully you had some time to yourself last night to think about what you did for your vision. Zoe, thank you for sending out this information last night to give them an opportunity to think about it. And what we're going to do is we're going to look at what we crafted yesterday for vision, mission, and I'm going to show you some wordsmithing that I did last night with core values. They are my words, they are not your words, and we'll spend a little bit of time making sure that they are your words. So here's our vision. Are we happy with it?
So there's one thing I think we missed the mark on. And I didn't think about it till late in the day, but connected. So our city with all the multimodal pathways, being able to get from point A to point B. We're a very connected city and we forward planned that way. Not all cities have that luxury of having multimodals throughout the whole thing. So I don't know, just a thought.
You could add it after inclusive with end.
You really want to get that golf cart thing in there, huh?
You know, it's on my mind. But no, that's just a thought. We are a very, very connected city. That is one of our strengths.
More thoughts?
That's the only one I got.
I'm okay adding connected.
This is up to you, folks. This is going to be your vision, so.
After inclusive and before end?
Yes, wherever, because then it still keeps with the rest of it.
Right, yeah, that's where I would put it.
What would it say?
Inclusive, comma, connected, and sustainable city. Setting his word a little longer.
Connected to what? I mean, just not us in this room reading it. I'm talking about the people out there when they say connected, when they read that, going to be connected to what? Westlake, yeah.
Is that the wrong word?
Yeah, I think so.
How else would you, oh, a golf cart family, or you?
I think innovation includes the golf cart myself. I mean.
Well, it's not just golf carts.
I mean, it's the whole.
We have bike rides throughout the whole city. We have walking trails.
That's what makes us innovative.
Accessible?
Yeah, using the word connected, as Charlotte's saying, someone reads that, what does that mean?
Yeah, I don't disagree.
But if you use the word accessible, means has many meanings. It could be the council is accessible.
What is the word modal actually translated to?
People are accessible to other neighbors.
What? What's the actual definition of the word modal?
Oh, Miller. I'm looking.
Yeah, bring up the chat.
I don't know.
Got it. Yeah. There he asks GPT.
Yeah, I think we're trying to include too much for the vision. I think it's, yeah. I'm kind of stuck on where, though. I'm not sure where residents are proud to call home. I don't know if that word is right.
A specific mood or method of transportation.
Change it to a place.
Yes, a place residence. I think that might be, because where is, where is that?
Mobility. Mobility is a word. I don't know. I don't want to complicate things.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think.
But that is one of the things that makes us very unique and special, and it's one of our strengths.
Which, again, I think innovation speaks to that. If you can talk about your vision and talk about your innovation, you can talk about the multimodal pathways, the golf cart, you know what I mean? I think it depends on how you're.
That's part of our innovation flourishing. Cool, tabled.
But I do think what Ken just recommended, instead of say where residents are proud to call home, maybe a place residents are proud to call home now and for generations to come. Sound good with that?
A city where residents are proud to call, a place, a place.
A place residents are proud to call home now. Yeah, I think a place is better than that where. Do you all agree? No?
I'm not hearing what you're saying.
I'm sorry. So where it reads where residents are proud to call home, I would like for us to consider replacing where with a place residents are proud to call home. Is everybody good with that or no?
Different perspective. Um, where and place. Place, I think, is more generalized and not specific. Where, I think, where is gearing it towards Westlake, in my opinion.
Well, you're looking to add the words a place, where.
Replacing the word where. I don't know if that reads, yeah, I don't know if that reads.
I'll give two more examples. A community, its residents proudly call home.
I like that. Westlake will be a thriving, inclusive, and sustainable city where innovation flourishes, safety is foundational, and a community where residents are proud to call home now and for generations to come.
I would, I didn't put where. It's a community its residents call, probably call home.
A community where, a community.
It's.
It's.
Residents.
You're replacing the word where with a community.
And adding community.
A community.
What are your other choices? Was that it?
Pride and home coming together. Yeah, that's why I didn't, I didn't mention that one.
Doc, do you still praise us for getting all of our work done yesterday, even though we're continuing today? Okay, thank you.
Ability is, this really is part of day two. You can finish day one. You've got day one, start, middle, finish, and then per play.
Look at you. That was fancy. Stand there, but yes. See that?
Probably take it out.
Probably. A community, its resident.
Yep.
And this is not.
Yeah, it's not.
I think that sounds good now. Okay.
Thoughts?
Yeah, let's, let's, let Melo make sure we're comfortable.
Are proud to call home instead of residents proudly call home. Residents, grammatically, you're saying now and for generations to come.
How about ending it after call home?
I think JP's point yesterday is he wanted it to be future forward, yeah, for the net, for our kids and our kids' kids.
Not us, but our kids.
Right, right. So that's why we.
And we have a lot of multi-generational homes, too.
Yeah. It's our, and for generations. He said. We need that grammatical person, yeah. Its residents are proud to call home. Its residents are. Are after residents.
Its residents proudly.
After residents. Are.
Community, its residents proudly call home. I don't understand why that's wrong.
Are, comma, how many space? Take out L Y, I'm proud. Now, comma, after now.
We're taking out call home.
No, no.
I know. It's got to be at least a two.
Our residents are proud.
A proud two call home.
Two call home, yep. Followed after.
I have peanut gallery over there.
We need some grammatical.
You're not even texting me anymore. You're just blurring out with one.
I think grammatically, the comma goes after we're home. Because you're distinguishing two dots.
Yeah.
Calling home, that's one dot. And for generate, now for generations, um, not.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, it'll be an hour for public comment later in the workshop.
Yeah, but then, but then we'd have to rewrite everything.
Yeah. All right. Thoughts?
I like it a lot.
Um, yes.
Different perspective.
Well, again, vision is forward thinking, of course. And we've begun with Westlake will, which is forward thinking. But we end with, here's the forward thinking. So whatever you had in work, positive authoritative statement that Westlake is a thriving community where innovation flourishes, safety is foundational, a community, a, a, we law, a community is resident. Oh, a community is residents are proud to call home now and for generations to come.
Yep.
Yes, I like that.
Make it is instead of will.
Mm-hmm, yes. Because it's thriving now, it's, yeah. And we'll be thriving continually, hopefully, yeah. I like that.
I still like it a lot.
Good. All right, but I'm going to ask a couple more questions before we move on. When somebody is looking to move to Westlake and they see a document from the city that outlines your vision, will they have any question about what your vision is? Will you be able to answer?
Explain.
This is where we're going.
Innovation.
And you can expect us to deliver on this.
There's nothing in that statement that is not accurate or not who we are.
And you can describe Westlake to anybody who's a neobite based upon your vision? Everyone's comfortable to be able to explain exactly what that says?
Sustainable, how would you all?
Sustainable is, I would consider it as the fact that, you know, we're very fiscally responsible and, you know, we grow at a measured pace. We're not taking on more than we can true. We are standing on our own true feet as a city. Our numbers look great.
Okay.
That's what I would say is sustainable.
Driving doesn't drive us today.
Right.
Well, I would say so because we're the fastest growing city within the state of Florida.
We're, we're not thriving from a standpoint that we drive half an hour to go to any commercial business. That's not thriving. In terms of today, we're striving to be thriving.
To go to any what? Commercial, I go to Publix in less than 50 women.
All right, well, I'm.
But that's our business, just public.
Looking for that.
I like thriving because I feel like. The growth of new businesses to the community is thriving. You got the whole James Business Park, you got.
We are.
You know, you have other major businesses coming in, the Lowe's attract. So it is thriving. It's a brand new city, what, 10 years old? So.
Exactly, and that's why I'm saying it's not thriving yet. It will be.
It is thriving because it went from nothing to where we are.
We're commanding, we're commanding per square foot for our commercial. What you're getting in downtown Palm Beach, what you're getting in, more than you're getting in Wellington, and there's a reason for that.
Well, I talked to a lot of people that would say that we're not thriving because we have to drive a half hour to go to a nice restaurant or go shopping other than Publix or Aldi's. I don't have a problem with the word thriving in there, but not when you put the is in front of it. It suggests that's where we are today, and I just don't see that.
I have a different perspective.
Well, I think Councilman Warner makes a good point. He says, he doesn't see Westlake as thriving right now, so he may have a difficult time.
Selling it.
Selling that concept to somebody who's brand new, coming to look at Westlake. So maybe the word is.
Maybe it's flourishing.
Or strives to be. I mean, we're headed in that direction, but we're not there yet.
So you would say Westlake is striving to be a thriving?
Something like that.
But then we look like we're not inclusive, sustainable, or so we got to somehow or another incorporate that.
So thriving is characterized by success.
In terms of a city thriving refers to, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
In terms of a city thriving refers to a condition where the urban environment is experiencing strong, sustainable, and inclusive growth, well-being across multiple dimensions. A thriving city typically shows economic vitality, diverse, resilient economy, strong business climate, innovation and entrepreneurship, rising incomes and low unemployment. And then you also have a social well-being aspect. High quality of life for residents of all backgrounds, access to education, healthcare, public services, social equity and inclusion, people feel safe, supported, and empowered, environmental sustainability, clean air, water, green spaces, public transportation, a low carbon footprint, climate resilience, and a cultural and civic life, vibrant arts and recreation opportunities, strong community engagement, celebration of diversity and heritage, good governance and infrastr, or if, nobody has better infrastructure than we. Good governance and infrastructure, transparent, responsive, accountable local government, reliable infrastructure, and smart city technology. Look at that, maybe an app. So that's the definition of a thriving city. So the question is, do we meet that or not?
Or does that make your case?
I think it makes my case. We're, we're not all of that. We're pursuing to become all of that, but when you put the word is, suggests that that's where we are today, and it's not the case.
But we're, it's our vision, so we're looking for.
So why don't we just take out the word A? Westlake is thriving.
No, we can't, it screws everything else up.
Inclusive and a sustainable city where innovation flourishes. So put the A's before it, sustainable.
I don't know. I kind of like it.
Will be was more accurate. Is becoming.
I don't mind the will be.
That was a personal person.
Yeah, I liked it that way, too.
It's becoming.
Characterize us as not thriving.
The vision is future looking anyway, isn't it? And the mission is how we get there.
Yes, the vision is future looking.
How we get there. So what was wrong with the will be?
There was just a suggestion I, and I'm not trying, I just threw it out there for discussion.
I know, I know, I just, I was trying to understand the thought process on what the, so if it's forward thinking, there's nothing wrong with having an opening forward thinking statement and then nailing it at the close with a forward thinking statement also.
So maybe will be.
So, Councilman Warner. Councilman Warner. So would will be, would that be good?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that.
Go back to the second one.
No, just change the last one to Westlake will be a thriving.
Yeah, and that gives the council, you know, all authority to, to look for that thriving.
Because we use will be in the first two, so it's fine. I'm good with it. Everyone else?
10 years from now, they can switch it to is.
Yep. Eight, eight years.
Eight years.
Depends what your definition of is is.
I'm just, I just did that.
Are we good? And I'll ask my question again. Can you explain this to somebody who's never been to Westlake? What it means, you can answer their questions. You're comfortable with this?
Looking at lots of projects.
I'm good with it.
What it's crazy.
Yes, everybody's good?
Yep.
Then we just have one? Please.
And then there was one.
Just that one.
Okay, we're good. So here's our mission. That Westlake is committed to building a safe, inclusive, and sustainable community by thoughtfully guiding growth,
prioritizing public safety, and enhancing quality of life by demonstrating responsive leadership.
The only thing I have is the last two words to be replaced with responsible decision making. Little different, not off the mark, it's basically the same, but it gets to the decisions.
Wow, I think responsive leadership is making responsible decisions.
I think, I think responsive leadership is making decisions based on what our constituents want. We're responsive to them. Tell us what they need and we respond.
Right.
But we, you also have to remember, too, that leadership entails a lot more than just decision making. So instead of fine tuning it to decision making, I think leaving it as leadership and defining the whole leadership package is important.
Understood, but it always comes down to the final decision.
Leadership isn't just always about decisions, too. It's also about portraying yourself in a certain manner. It's about being a good stewardship for the city. So it's not, you know, I guess the decision to do that might be there, but it's not as obvious to someone.
Minor adjustment, I'm just suggesting.
I just like leadership because it's more encompassing.
I like responsive leadership because it, it, it puts a focus on the fact that we, we listen to the people that, that elected us to be here.
And why have inclusive in here when we already have it in our vision? What does that add?
Well, sustainable, too.
Yeah, I might get there.
I'm okay with leaving.
Yeah, I think the two, the two beat up each other.
Yeah, but I think the mission is how we're going to get there, too. And I think that. Yeah, but I think the mission is how we're going to get there too, and I think that we're always going to be striving to be more and more inclusive, more and more safe.
Yeah, we've already said it.
We said we, we are and will be, but we didn't say how we were going to get there, and the mission's more how we're going to get there and. So this isn't saying that we will get there, I guess.
Yeah.
Or how we're going to get there.
I just think it's redundant.
All right, so let me comment about that, and then I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Um, actually, there's redundancy because the vision and the mission, although they go hand in hand, they each stand alone in what their goal is. So it's okay to have some redundant words. But now, a citizen of the city of Westlake, and I come to a council meeting where you've made a decision, you've taken a final vote, and you've implemented something. And I don't like what you've implemented. Can you respond to me why you implemented it that way and, and why you implemented it because of your mission? Do you feel comfortable when you get criticized for what you've done? When you point to the mission and explaining to me as a citizen that I don't like what you've done?
You've been excluded, is what you're saying.
Not necessarily excluded, I just don't like what you've done.
That depends on what you just voted on. I mean, but I would feel comfortable in any vote that I would take to be able to relay it back to this because this would be my guiding path on what.
And that's what I'm looking for. Are you comfortable with these words that you can explain to the disgruntled citizen who doesn't like what you've done? Here's the reason why you did it. The how, the what and the why. Are you comfortable with these words?
Yep.
There's nothing in that mission statement that I would not feel comfortable standing behind. Not a single thing.
Decision on the, at a meeting, yeah.
Committed to building a safe, inclusive and sustainable community, thoughtfully guiding growth, prioritizing public safety and enhancing quality life by demonstrating responsive leadership.
Yeah.
There's, there's nothing in there that I couldn't stand on.
The only one I have a problem with is inclusive. Because of your example, you've just been excluded from a decision that was made.
Now, I haven't been excluded. I just don't like the decision you've been made. I probably sat in the audience and
Yeah.
maybe even came up and gave you public comment, and you didn't didn't go my direction for my public comment. Does this, does this help you defend what you've done in the mission, how you've done it?
Orientation, any of those things did not affect our decision making.
Or we made the decision.
To be born.
That's, that's for the city of Westlake that included being safe, inclusive, sustainable. So though you may not feel that way, we made that decision on the whole of the majority of the city. And I think we always have to think of the majority, not the one person.
And so the mission helps you do that. Can I just try? Right, can I just try an example? Um, I think this is an example, reduction of parking spaces in commercial zones. I'm not happy that you've reduced, what is it, the number of parking spaces required in commercial zones? Can you, can you help me understand why you made that decision? Pointing to your mission?
Hold on, I'll find a way. Give me a second.
Public sake. What was the change in that? We reduce those and made. Because the golf cart, something changed, right?
Also thoughtfully guiding growth by doing that. Because.
So we really did not reduce it. I'm trying to, trying to get back to.
Reduce the number of parking spaces.
We'll get there. Hold on.
In order to allow for a larger daycare, thus enhancing the quality of life for those moms that needed to drop their kids off at daycare.
Or say from a safety perspective, maybe reducing those parking spaces um and making wider or.
I'm going to defer to the city manager on this one. City manager, why did we?
No, you can't do that because it was your decision. It was the council's decision.
What, what brought that to us?
I don't remember. What was it? Did we reduce parking spaces or is this?
Remember the Winn-Dixie or something where we went from?
Oh, it allowed us to put a whole new bank in, which we desperately needed, thus improving the quality of life.
Supporting the community.
That's what it was.
Guiding our growth.
Yeah, we were able to get, we were able to bring a Chase Bank in an out parcel to a plaza that never had one prior. A service that we desperately needed.
So I think it's going back to thoughtfully guiding growth.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, and enhancing quality of life.
Implementing that change, we were therefore guiding the growth of the city to allow another bank to come in and compete with any other banks that come.
Right. Okay, you can't go back on this like.
I can stand up.
So you're telling me you believe your mission will help you respond clearly to help residents understand why you have done what you did?
I think so.
I think you should put that in front of us though every, every meeting, so we make sure.
Well, yeah, well, well, when, and when this is all over, you're going to see your vision and your mission in a lot of places, okay? In fact, um, that's a long story. I was going to tell you about my foundation work, but um, well, I'll tell you real quickly. I'm the chief operating officer for a family-run foundation, and we have, I do the agendas for the foundation because I'm the C A O. We have our vision and mission on every single agenda that we publish. Virtually every document that comes out of our foundation, the vision's at the top, the mission's right below it. And then whatever you want to communicate, that's what we do at the foundation. So I was going to make that recommendation toward the end here, but. Okay, so I think we're okay here. So let me help you defend your mission. And it just takes two words, or maybe three. You can always start your sentence to a constituent with the words, "I believe." "I believe that what we did was such and such, and here's why." "I believe in order to be committed to building a safe community, here's why I voted this way." Or you can do, "we believe" if you want to speak collectively. So the word "believe" goes real well at the front of defending a mission. "I believe my decision was geared towards sustainable, toward being a sustainable community." "I believe I spent time thoughtfully guiding growth for Westlake." "I believe in prioritizing public safety, safety, and that's why I made this decision." So "I believe" or "we believe" is very strong when talking to a constituent. So we're good? Zoe, please do a save. Okay, the next slide. There's no pride of authorship. I worked on this last night. When I got home, I took your core values and tried to make statements out of your core values. Because what we did was we just picked out six words. So again, no pride of authorship, and this may need some work, but here's what I did with core values. The core values that you picked out are written in red. And so I wrote, "We'll act with integrity, we'll be ethical in all of our efforts, we'll demonstrate a sense of stewardship, we'll always place safety first." I'm sorry, everything begins with we. We, 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 we will always place safety first. We will be transparent and accountable. We will model always being respectful. And again, my words, I'm uncomfortable unless I hear from you about how you would like to present your core values.
I don't know, maybe we missed it, maybe we didn't, but I think one of our core values should be being good stewards of public dollars. You know?
Best stewardship.
Stewardship.
Best steward.
So I bet, I think we should say it there. So like, like I want to, I want to, I want to.
Financial stewardship.
I want to say that we're being good stewards of public tax dollars, like we're.
Different perspective on that?
Sure.
Stewardship is encompassing of everything.
Yeah.
Financial stewardship is prioritizing one section.
Environmental.
Mm-hmm.
You know, stewardship is all encompassing.
Mm-hmm.
It's like a catch-all, but.
I've been at all, yes.
I wouldn't mind.
But you're typing it out, Lee.
Happy. Being responsible with public dollars as a core value by itself. Just a thought.
I think that was put together well.
Yeah, it was like, I, I think that's fine.
But I want them to be your words, so please spend some time with it. Bless you.
Bless you.
We will model always being respectful. We will respect.
When you say demonstrate a sense of stewardship, does it kind of leave it open? When you say a sense, only part of it? You know, maybe fifty percent effort?
I don't disagree. Sense of it's like, I feel like I'm kind of being.
Yeah.
There's like a hint of stewardship there.
So let's get rid of a sense of.
We will demonstrate good stewardship of our public obligations.
I say we focus on money. That should be one of our core values.
Well, with all respect, Mayor, core values are about behaviors. Core values are how you are going to behave.
We will demonstrate responsible stewardship. That a sense, a sense sounds like, I don't know. I see what he's saying. Saying like, oh, we're trying to.
Yeah.
About that, but not actually.
Trying to make it feel like we're.
Responsible steward, demonstrate responsible stewardship?
Yep.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, we could have up to eight, right?
Sure. Yeah, if you got, if you got.
You said six to eight.
I said, yeah, five to eight. And you're at six.
Can we look at the wording for "we will model always being respectful" to something like we will consistently demonstrate respect in all our actions? I think it needs to be inclusive of how we respect each other as well as our constituents. I don't know if we will model.
About respectful engagement with our community.
And each other. I think we got to put.
Community being everyone.
I don't know. When you read it, what you think of.
Is, is this for the city itself or for us as council members?
This is for you as council members. This is how the organization will behave as modeled by the five elected officials that sit in front of the community once a month at your monthly meeting.
I think we should always be representing the city well in our behavior. Shouldn't uh.
So respect will be at the core of how we lead and interact?
I, I don't dislike that.
What do y'all think? You want to try that one?
Does it have to say we will?
I think we should.
Again, those are my words. Put your words in here because you're going to have to live with your core values. Because once we decide them, I'm going to challenge you on them, so get ready.
But that's about us. I think that speaks more to.
Well, you could expand that to interact not only between yourselves but with the public.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost like a code of conduct for council members.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We don't actually have, but we should.
Right. We will be transparent and accountable and always place safety first.
Okay, I like that.
Yeah.
Because I was having a problem with the model weight. Does that look funny that we have a bunch of we wills and all of a sudden it's just one separate?
You tell me.
Good last line.
Well, we could always change it to "we will lead and interact."
Can switch it, yeah.
With respect uh for at the core.
With respect, we will lead and interact with respect.
Yeah.
As a, as a core, how we.
How about putting the word deliberate in there? We will lead, deliberate and interact. Because that would mean.
Could just get.
Council would.
Stop that recently. We will lead and interact with respect.
Yeah.
To all.
To all.
We're. For all.
To all, to all and the, and the public.
Been the flows better against.
Deliberate is interact.
Well, deliberate would be amongst the five of us. Interact would be with everyone else besides us.
But we still.
Interact could be.
By deliberating, you're still interacting.
I agree. Interacting with each other and.
Yeah.
We will lead and interact with respect.
In the.
Respect for all.
Or with all.
We will lead and interact.
We will lead and interact with respect.
Respect.
I don't know about that.
Interact respectfully with all.
Can being fiscally responsible be a core value?
Part of stewardship.
Still part of stewardship, huh?
Stewardship encompasses finances, times, attitudes, environment, resources. It's, it's everything in one.
Okay.
Lead and interact with respect. Yeah. I was.
Place safety first.
Respect. Um.
Safety and security will always be paramount, but this says the same thing. It's fine.
Ethic, that's, question is ethical in efforts or ethical in our decisions? Are they one and the same? Are they two different items?
Would efforts encompass?
Or.
Yeah, I mean, if you always.
Is a decision an effort?
Well, the decision is the last part of making an effort. The effort is the process, and you have to be ethical in your entire process.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, because.
And all of our efforts is like, and everything we try to do will try to be ethical.
Just a challenge to make.
Yeah, no, I think it.
That was just a different perspective, right?
Yeah. In all of our efforts.
On, on the last one, we will lead and interact respectfully with all?
We can do that, but-
I have no issues with that.
We can do respectfully.
With all.
Yeah, respectfully is a noun, that is an adjective. Use noun or adjectives, or vibes.
The last name.
With all.
Oh, I see. We will conduct ourselves with respectful leadership. And constant communication. Oh, man.
So we have seven.
Transparent and accountable.
With respect for everyone. We can, we will engage in respect for everyone.
Wheels still turning?
Respectful leadership. Period?
Interactions will be guided by respect for all individuals. I don't know, I think I might like to- Right.
The lead and their act respect.
Two will go there?
Okay, how, this is, it's changing it up a little bit. Our leadership and interactions will be guided by respect for all individuals.
Or you have to say- Individuals.
We one with respect. Or we will, we will lead and treat everyone with respect.
I mean, that's very to the point.
So, so in me, we lead-
One Zoe, keep that one. And then do another one.
She did, she copied it.
She's doing the editing.
Copy pasted it.
Um, we lead and treat everyone with, with respect. We lead.
That one though, keep that one.
She did, it's up there. It's above it.
Or we can say we wills. We will lead and treat everyone with respect.
Which one?
Lead with respect and treat everybody with respect.
Yeah, both of them. Treat them. Take the back? I don't know.
Bye, Felicia.
Yeah, I guess so.
So is it okay for Zoe to retract that one that's highlighted? Okay.
Yep. We will lead and treat everyone with respect.
Dr. Schumit, does that read well?
I think it does.
Okay.
How about we will act with integrity and honesty? That's, that's an A for that we didn't include originally.
I'm okay with that one, I'm okay with that.
Hang on, yeah, I do.
It's fine.
It's fine with me, I'm-
For me. Responsible stewardship. Hyper-focus on dollars. Like? Hyper-focus on public dollars.
I think that's it.
I can do all of those.
Uh huh.
I'm just looking back, she's yesterday, I just see that the native.
I like it. Are you still working on it, Eric?
No, I'm good. Everyone's good, okay. So, this is the most dangerous slide of all. This is the most dangerous statement you can make. Because core values are behaviors. And you folks are seen publicly behaving all the time. So my question is, are you prepared to behave just like the slide says?
What about me?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at everybody, I'm looking at everybody. Cause once we establish this as our core values, this is going to be your behavior pattern. And again, this is the dangerous one, because if you fall out of the pattern, you're in trouble. This can be pointed to very easily, once, you know, you put it out there. I'm sure this is gonna go on the website, and it'll go in communications, and so I, I wanna make sure that you, you five can live with, with this decision.
Can hold it there, but safety. When you say integrity, ethical, being ethical and honest, people might perceive not, that you're not.
That happens all the time. That's why this is dangerous. You have to not only demonstrate, but then you have to defend the decisions that you make and the behavior that you exhibit. Ken, I think you, you're looking to say something.
Yeah, I have a question for you. Is it ethical to tell a type of business what vendor they have to use?
You mean like a trash collection?
Yeah, that's where he's, that's where, that's where he's-
Exactly. Is it ethical? And in our other thing, is it inclusive? Because does that cut out other vendors from the bid process? Some vendor may be only commercial, some may only be residential. Is it ethical for, for us to tell other businesses what vendors they have to use? It's just a question.
Yes.
If you're comfortable with it, that's fine, if you believe it's ethical.
Yes, because if it means if, if, if a franchise agreement with a waste management collector means superior service at a lower cost to all of our residents?
But is it ethical to offload the cost to the commercial? I'm just raising questions. Because I have to, I have to wrestle with this personally. Is it, is it ethical to offload the cost to somebody else?
It's not, it's not even necessarily offloading the cost. They're willing to lower the cost of the residential-
Because they're making more money on the other.
But nobody, the, the commercial human is not paying more.
I, I beg to differ. I've seen it where the commercial actually pays another twenty percent higher than what they could get with other vendors.
To look at it.
Understand, but that's, that's why I raised the question. Is it ethical for us to force that? If you're good with, with being able to stand and say to anybody that it's ethical?
He's just using it as an example.
I know.
As an example.
About, so-
In, in any, in any contract, anything we're doing, is it ethical for us to be doing or to force somebody to do something in a certain way as a independent business?
I think if it matches the values of what we wanna portray for the city as a whole, then I would say yes. Um, but if we're forcing something on businesses for-
Personal.
Personal gain or personal, um, ideas, or then it wouldn't be an ethical decision. But I think if it's geared and focused as a community as a whole, because we think it's better for everyone, and we're including and being inclusive of everyone, then it is an ethical decision. That would be my, that would be my response.
I'm fine with, I'm just kind of following up with Dale's.
No, no, I know.
These are things we're gonna be living by, and we're gonna be judged by, and you as a council need to be able to say, no. I stand by it one hundred percent, and it is ethical, or it is this, and it is that. And unless we can do that in every case, then we shouldn't have it in here. And I think that's where Dale's coming from, because it is a two-edged sword for us.
Well, also, we could, I'm just throwing this out, like, say, with some companies coming, and three of us don't like that particular company, and even though code allows for variations of signage, we're like, we wanna make it the smallest sign as possible. Then it could be like, is that ethical? You know, because we don't like that company.
Those are, those are the things we're wrestling with right now. That's why I filled it out there.
Is it ethical to deny service to another fast food restaurant that may wanna come? Because we don't want any more fast food restaurants.
Or a big box store.
Or a big box store.
Do we have ethical in our, um, core values now? I was just thinking, like, we-
I don't know if we actually have anything spelt out at the present time.
We don't have core values now?
I don't think we have.
Okay. Like, we've made all these decisions. I think so, it's okay.
I think if you're acting in the best interest of the city as a whole, as an inclusive manner, I think it's an ethical decision.
Yeah, I think we-
Is it ethical to hire a trash company because they took you out to a nice dinner?
Absolutely not.
No. That's to be under a hundred dollars.
That happens.
And that would not be ethical.
You need to be reporting it. That's all I know.
It's not ethical, um, just with no standards. You're, it's ethical on the basis of what our development codes are, what our legal requirements are. And if it's not unethical, then wouldn't it then be ethical?
Right.
I mean, clearly, there are certain things that you would say were, would be unethical. I voted for this trash company because it took us out to a nice dinner. That would be unethical.
Yeah, but then you rest on state ethics rules and those things, that's-
But then you what?
You have to follow what state ethics and what Palm Beach County ethics say at the same time, and you have to file a report if you're doing that.
Someone believes in ethics.
Let her be light. Oh, gosh.
Ken, are you suggesting that that ethical ways be believed in?
No, I'm just, I, my whole, my whole point of what I'm bringing up is as Dale said, what we put on here is the guidance, and we gotta be able to-
Let's think of some of our really hot button issues right now.
Say yes or no. This should be out there as a guidepost or a measuring stick by which you're gonna be measured by, by the residents.
Right.
But as an elected official, you're held to ethics anyway, so, I mean, I don't think that's-
That are ethical standards, that doesn't necessarily mean anyone behaves ethically. It's all about behavior, how you behave as a site official.
And I can tell you, it's also in and out of public view. So that's the, it's not just what we're doing on the day, it's that, it's everything that we do. So I mean, I'm held to those standards already, so I'm okay with any one of those. I'll be fired if I don't, if I don't follow any of them.
Very hot button issues that we have right now. So we've got this fishing situation, are we setting a trap for ourselves? You know, is it, is it ethical to-
The fishing situation isn't really the city. The fishing situation really isn't the city, it's-
When there's no science posted.
That's not us.
It's, sure.
Didn't you say that the city would have to pass an ordinance or resolution?
In order for a different level of enforcement to occur, yes. You'd have to say that, uh, you're enforcing Sid's-
And it was in a park, it would be us.
So, I, I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Let's think of some of our real hairy things that we have, make sure we're not hurting ourselves somehow.
I don't think it would be unethical to follow what's already established as far as the laws are concerned, being that there is no trespassing on the lakes already. So as long as we follow those laws and forthright in such a way, then what would be unethical about saying that we can't?
Honestly, I don't know, I was just though-
No, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of different routes that they would say would be unethical if we did just make sure that we followed the rules and laws that are already in place.
I'm not talking about just ethical, I'm talking about all of it. Uh, stewardship, transparent, accountable, respect, integrity, honesty. Let's think of some of the things we we're kind of dealing with right now and make sure that-
Do we just take the whole ethical sentence out and just let people just, I'm just, it's just again-
I don't like thinking about, um-
You have integrity and honesty up there too, and that fits into the same category.
What about, um?
I think those are all good.
What about some of the post-perceived conflicts between Ken, wearing both hats as the Sid director and the and the city director, are we, are we-
Do these apply to Ken as well?
Apply to everybody.
Okay.
That raises a good point.
You know, I'm trying to think of everything, you know?
Right. How does this, how do you react to that? Sitting on both boards?
I have no problem, because I've also got several, um, letters back from the IG and stuff saying there is no conflict. And as I've stated multiple times, when the city and Sid get into an issue that becomes potentially an issue, I step out and I put the two attorneys in place, and they handle it between the two boards, and I step out of the situation. I remove myself from the middle of what's going on.
Right. I'm okay with everything up there.
So, okay, so I, I don't want us to get too much more in the weeds. Um, from my perspective, this is a very strong state, or series of statements, very strong. And I'm pleased with it. Um, if you are, again, my only question is, are you prepared to defend your behavior with these words? Cause you will get called on it. I promise you, you'll get called on it. But if you can live with these words, and we will publish these words.
What do we think the trap is, the word ethical? Because if that's the trap, ethics are included in, in integrity and honesty.
So many different ways. Let's say when the attorney says it's very apartheid things, and you've already met with the developer, or you've met, you know, and people are like, well, that's kind of shady, that, you know, that doesn't look good, even though there's nothing wrong with it. It, you know, it's the appearance, and then people say, well, that might, he's not very ethical about what he's-
And that's a great example. So ex parte communications helps, uh, the public if they understand it. But help, would help them understand that that is the ethical route you take when you're making, um, a decision with land use or site plans. Um, you disclose, because the law says you have to disclose your ex parte communications, and when you do, that's being ethical.
But there's a perception also on the opposite-
Well, that's my question. So can, can you defend this? You know, can you deal with that perception that they believe that you're not being ethical? See, I believe that's a strong statement. And hopefully you'll keep it in there, but it's up to you. But you can defend your ethics of making a a decision impacting a developer or an applicant with your ex parte communication disclosure.
I would be cautious on removing it, because we started with it. It is public record, this meeting. If we remove it, it may look like we're trying to hide the efficacy.
Is someone asking to remove it?
No.
No, it's just, it was just a challenge.
Our, our past actions grandfathered in. My ex-wife, who's my best friend now, would probably have a couple of things to say about some of this stuff.
Well, that's not a city decision.
Exactly.
But where the hell, where the hell did I stand without that?
We said it-
Where the hell did I stand?
It's public and private.
Right.
Are we ready to move? Are we ready to move on? Are we good? We're good? We're good? We're good?
Okay, send it.
Okay, we're good. Uh, save, Zoe? We're saved. Okay. Want to talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges? Um, and I'm gonna ask four questions. What strengths can we begin to build on right now? What weaknesses must we be aware of right now? What weaknesses must we be aware of right now? What opportunities must we take advantage of right now? And what challenges are we facing that we can avoid? Right now, and these four questions will lead us into, uh, working on our goals. So you have lots of words around the room. And, um. Zoe and Odette, this is where I'm going to ask you to help us with the flip charts. Um, we're going to do some more key words or key phrases put up on the flip charts. Pulling from, you know, the words on the wall from earlier in the book, the workbook, from appendix A, from appendix B. Uh, we're going to pull from that and we're going to start putting up. Topics that are strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges. And, and maybe I'll kick you off. Pulling from the bike rack. Let's just take the top one. Lobbying Palm Beach County regarding interconnectiveness of roads. I don't know if that's a strength, a weakness, an opportunity or a challenge.
Both.
I think it's an opportunity.
All right, I've heard all three. I've heard opportunity, challenge and a weakness. Well, again, looking around the room, looking at your workbook, looking at appendix A and B. Give me the things you think you want to work on. Those things can either be strengths, weaknesses, opportunities or challenges.
I think a, a strength is our public safety emphasis in the city.
Our strength is definitely our.
Our strength is a public safety emphasis on the city.
I agree.
The question is what's?
The question is what strengths can we begin to build on right now?
We can still build on it.
Okay, so then we need to talk about what we need to do to build on that strength.
Yeah.
So, so give me some words about building on the strength of public safety.
Uh, can you to invest in?
Continue to.
Public safety.
In technology, um.
And technology.
Looking at some license plate readers. I know that we're looking at bringing on an extra, you know, officer. Uh, or deputy, I should say, um, but those are some of the.
Lighting, lighting standards.
Lighting standards, those are some of the strengths that.
Okay, so public, uh, Zoe, if you'd, public safety?
One of, I mean.
What, what are the subsets that you mentioned? You mentioned the subsets that you want to work on, you want to build on.
Public safety, technology.
Techno, all right, so under that is technology.
She invests. Investing in personnel.
In a personnel. Personnel allocation.
Lighting standards.
Lighting.
I think something that you had brought up in one of our conversations, Eric, was that. Potentially. Whether it's a Lowe's or whoever requiring them to have.
Public private partnerships with.
Private partnership with additional security at their.
Cameras.
Yep. Public private.
Private partnerships.
Partnerships, I think.
Recreations, um, surveillance.
Commercial, public, private.
The acronym for that is PPP.
Yeah.
And, and what's the public private partnership?
So public private partnerships that would bring some public safety is, um. Palm, Palm Beach Sheriff's Office has a real time crime center that ingests cameras into their real time crime center and. Requiring a certain level of commercial establishment to be able to integrate their camera feeds from the exterior of the building into the. Real time crime center for situational awareness.
How do we do that here at Westlake?
We do it by creating ordinances that require that level of commercial establishment during business, uh, tax renewals. Or whatever the case may be to integrate into, and it's not expensive.
So, or, I mean, we, I think we should just say. Prioritizing public safety through ordinances, because there's a lot more, you know, we are, no lodging in public places, uh. There's all kinds of ordinances that we can pass for public safety. You know, we already have open container, but. There's all kinds of ordinances that we can pass as a body that will.
Camping and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to get.
As specific as we can in what we're going to do. So just, you know, passing ordinances is not a. Not specific.
Okay, what kind of ordinance?
Yeah.
Sure.
Pass ordinance, uh.
List the ordinance, the type, don't even say pass, just list. Ordinance for this, ordinance for this, ordinance for this.
Uh, all right, so do we already have, I forget what we have and what we don't, that's the problem. So did we, did we do lodging in public places? I know I asked for it a long time ago.
Yes.
That one's already on the books?
We, we took care of the, um. Theoretical homeless situation with what DJ's office put together.
The vagrants. Okay, so that's already on the books. What about, um?
Panhandling as well.
We did that.
What about, I'm just looking at some things, community policing. Um, do we want to add something, neighborhood watch programs? Um, some public alert systems, do we have? I know we have something.
Oh, maybe a app would be great for that.
Street lighting and safety designs.
The state does have a contract that municipalities can partake in that creates a emergency management app. I could get you the name of it, but it's free for municipalities. That we actually could, could. Adopt and, and get in here for, for situations like.
So we passed the stacks offender ordinance already, so that's done.
Smart traffic lights and sensors, do we have those? We have.
What are we missing?
We would have to make sure that the county's DOT department, um, is able to ingest that smart traffic. Uh, like currently, because I know there's some counties that are going to it, but I've not gotten there yet. So I'm not sure if they do or not, but there is the ability to. Do that.
What are we missing?
I, I had some discussions with the manager and I know he's not too keen on this, but we could also look at the, um. The school safety speed zone cameras. Those could be enforced during school hours, not just school zone hours. Um, so that's something that could also curtail our traffic issues that we have on Seminole Pride as far as traffic. Accidents are concerned, because we all know that speeding leads to accidents.
So during the whole school hour day?
During the whole school hour day.
Is it reduced speed there?
It's not reduced speed, but if the speed limit is forty five on Seminole and they're doing fifty five or over, it still could be enforced during the school hours.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, okay.
And then during school zone, speed hours, kids enforced, you know, to whatever the school zone speed limit is.
Couldn't.
That does require a sworn officer to administer, um, but I don't see why. If we decide to go with the traffic officer, the additional traffic officer that cannot be encompassed into one of his duties.
So be at potentially the new elementary school and then Seminole Ridge.
Correct. It does protect one of our most vulnerable populations, children.
I think it was a loitering. I think he said we were missing a loitering.
I don't have a sign.
Ordinance. Like.
So we.
We couldn't charge those kids. You know, we sent the helicopters and all that.
We're missing a trespassing.
We're missing something.
So it could be a trespassing ordinance that, that allows. Private entities to adopt. And then be able to sign a document stating that they allow, you know, the, the PBSO debut to act on their behalf to actually. Issue the trespass warning and then after the warning comes the arrest, but the warning has to come first.
What about loitering?
It's the same.
All right, we're getting a little. Yeah, go ahead.
So. I've got lost on what we're doing here. What strengths can we begin to build on right now is where we are, right? And we felt that public safety is our strength right now.
Yes.
So why do we believe? And just so I can get back on track here. That public safety is our strength. Is it because we have three officers? Is it because we have police at every?
We have very, very low crime.
We have low crime, we're focused on, on public safety in, in our, in our decision making.
I know, I know all that, but why is it our strength right now? That's my question. Because we have a cop at every other house, because we have three officers.
Because we have low crime, because we have a, a centric, a focus centric public safety.
But what's making it our strength? We have low crime, but why?
There could be various reasons why, um.
But that's what we need to build on. So why is it our strength?
Are we supposed to be building on why we believe it's our strength? Are we supposed to be?
We're supposed to be. Right, if you have a strength and you want to build on it. What do you want to do to build on it?
And, and just said what we're going to do to build on it.
But why is it our strength? I mean, we gotta.
No, no, it's already our strength and now we need to be better.
But why? Why?
We're not asking to define why it's our strength right now.
The why.
No, you're building on the stuff we don't have. That's how you build.
How about the PBSO substation?
I think that could be something that maybe we think about when we build out our city hall.
Well, it's not ours, it's the county anyways, so.
That's where it's going to go anyways.
The lands aren't.
Oh, they're going to build one there?
The lands aren't even deeded, yeah.
Help our officers in the surrounding area district six plus.
But there's nothing for them to do. They own the, we can ask.
Ask them to hurry up.
Trust me, I.
We have to get the county to finally.
I ask every week.
Accept. The land offer.
That's what I thought.
From Minto.
Yeah.
They have been. Dragging your feet.
Well, but I believe that topic is something that can be built on right now.
And once we do have it, the community will feel better. We have a substation.
So can we capture that, Zoe?
Substation?
SO substation. I don't want to get too much in the weeds here. Uh, you know, I think we might be getting quite a bit in the weeds.
So.
Because this is not the heavy lift yet today, so.
But you did ask for specific.
You asked. That is the weeds.
All right. So let's move off of public safety.
Okay, more.
Okay, we're a master planned community.
Okay. Is that a strength?
I think that's a strength.
Okay, and how can we build on that? Do we need to build on that if we're master planned?
In my judgment, yes, we need to build on it.
You help Odette write why? Master plan community is the topic.
Right. Uh, we have a primary property owner.
Talk, talk to your colleagues.
A primary property owner that. Owns the vacant property in the master plan community that we need more collaboration with.
So what's the strength?
So it's like strength or weakness.
The, the strength is it's a planned community.
Strengths that we have on that to plan the music.
Mm-hmm, and we did write that.
Yeah, that's one of the things.
So, so the word collaboration is a subset of that. Keep going.
Is that it? Is that it for master plan?
We, we have vacant. Industrial property and vacant town center property that. Needs more definition. Added to the master plan or to the.
But doesn't that fall under the collaboration rule?
Yeah, I think it does. I mean, it's a result of collaboration.
Could be a subset.
I can cover if I disagree or I.
Yes.
You refer to everyone.
So is that it? Collaboration on the master plan community?
I think.
Pretty good catchall.
Cool. Think you need another L.
Prime property owner.
Need another L.
Oh, yeah, two L's.
Let's spell check queen over here.
Any opportunities you can see, any weaknesses, any challenges?
Are we done with strengths?
They all came up at the same time.
I mean, one of, one of the city's strengths is obviously its infrastructure. We have the greatest power grid. We don't lose electricity during any climate event. All of our, all of our utilities are underground. Um, we don't get any standing water. That's obviously one of the city's strengths and I guess to build on it, it'd be. To continue to. Do what we've been doing.
Right.
We don't have control over the infrastructure.
What's that?
We don't control the infrastructure. We don't have any. Disvisions. Right, it's all Sid.
Well, you have, where you have control is, for example. Within the comp plan, within the LDRs, we set up finished floor elevations, et cetera. By controlling the finished floor elevations, you also assist in. Flood control insurance, et cetera, et cetera. So by flooding, by setting those, you do have impact on infrastructure per se.
I was just stating what one of our strengths, one of our very obvious strengths as a city are.
I think it is, but how do we build on it?
That's a question.
Yeah.
I don't know. And, Ken, any insight there?
You would build on it by not changing your flood elevation requirements, success.
Permeable. Permeable.
Yeah, you're, you're, it's an impervious ratios.
Impervious ratio.
Because again, if you start changing. Impervious and impervious ratios. Now you have more runoff, more sheet flow hits the drainage and systems faster. It was never designed to hit that fast, so then you have flooding. It's the item that's occurring right now in Miami-Dade County. Where it rains and all the streets flood instantly. Because what was originally designed to be held on property is now hitting the streets. The streets and drain systems were never designed to handle that much. Runoff that fast. So you have flooding. And they're now going crazy on how to fix it. But now they're having to go back and try to. Teach all million people how to not.
Build on it by maintaining the status quo, maintain the infrastructure.
By keeping your infrastructure requirements the same as they are of original design.
Let, let me flip that. What about infrastructure in the city of Westlake is a weakness?
That's one thing we do really well.
Extra more access roads.
Infrastructure could also be considered buildings, no?
Well, it depends on, I mean, yes, is the answer. Infrastructure could be buildings, but typically it's your, uh, water.
Water sewer, okay.
Well, the.
Power, drainage.
The lack of east-west. Connectivity is, is a weakness on infrastructure.
Right.
Um, I'm going to suggest it's a weakness on.
Transportation.
Or mobility.
Mobility. Infrastructure. But again, I think in the end, you're not going to build a road.
Right. Uh, and lack of public transit.
So maybe we just leave infrastructure alone since. Since we don't have to do much there.
Just write leave alone.
New is the sheep, we can use the sheep or something.
Um, one of our weaknesses is obviously communication with our residents.
Okay, there you go.
And how we can build on it. App, Westlake app.
Communication with residents.
Is it deliverable? We can. Pinpoint.
Westlake app.
Westlake webpage.
Electronic bulletin.
PIO.
PIO.
Put it in the budget.
Put Westlake app and then Westlake webpage. And then as a subset of the Westlake webpage, put dot gov.
And electronic bulletin board.
Yep.
As a subset, put dot gov. And stand that our webpage does not.
That we don't have a.
That we, that we don't have a dot gov.
You said PIO too, right?
Yeah, PIOs and there's some.
I get to take these off the.
PIO is another.
Bike rack.
Electronic bulletin board.
Westlake.gov is. Yes.
It's a Westlake.
But we can do westlake-fl.gov. Westlake-fl.gov.
Bulletin board. Bulletin board.
Marquee, whatever you want to call it.
Military is now four point seven five.
That's what you think it's gonna be.
Do you want these things?
That's what you think it's gonna be.
It all comes down to dollars, people.
Yes, it does.
Communication with residents. Have we seen anything up here? Anything in the notes? Anything in your workbook? Anything in the pending page?
I see what the, I see what, what the people have to say. People have to say, reduce property taxes. That's the first thing that jumped out of his page.
Alright, nothing else?
Everbridge, right, Everbridge?
Everbridge?
Everbridge.
Yeah.
That's the, yes, one there. That's the. That the state provides for municipalities in.
Everbridge.
What does it do?
It's a, it's a free app, emergency management app that allows us to. It allows us to push out communications to residents and stuff.
Zoe's ready.
Lack of a meeting place is a weakness.
To develop, to develop city communications.
So.
Facilities. That works. Yep, cause that could be parked.
Development, citywide evacuation plan.
Started as facilities.
That would be a meeting place.
Facilities, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Facilities is our, is our topic and.
So.
Lack of a meeting place.
There's just a few places in the city of Westlake that don't have multimodal because it pre-existed the city in front of Gator Shack and that plaza and some other small places. I think getting those sidewalks converted, working with the county to get those sidewalks converted to multimodal, fit the rest of our city, would be something we can do now.
Would that be under transportation or?
Probably back under mobility and, and transportation. It just popped in my brain, so I'm bouncing around.
No, so is that, is that another?
No, that's a different topic.
Different topic transportation.
Okay, so, so, so wait, not the topic.
But he's putting under facilities, meeting place.
Oh, okay.
Meeting place.
That's gonna put.
Transportation.
Transportation as the main topic.
Yep.
There's a lot of transportation things in these community engagement.
Multimodal compliance.
Facilities.
Speeds are too low on local street, complete. Perceived actual conflicts of interest.
LED lit stop signs, that's under transportation. Multimodal expansion.
Should we put bringing public transport there even though we're working on it? That's one of the things here. Bring public transit to Westlake. Should we add that? Cause we don't have it, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a very easy deliverable because we already got the quote.
That's transportation. It says fix and maintain streetlights, so even though transit, SIT. So. I'm just reading through these notes.
Our sixtieth or?
Yeah.
Connect, load connections?
Okay, load interconnectivity.
Yes.
Connections or inter?
Interconnectivity.
And that takes care of another. Although we identified it as lobbying public kind, but let's just leave it broad, the interconnectedness of.
We'll do what we need to do.
And we get to goals and objectives.
As long as it's ethical.
This might fall under facilities, but it says the fitness trail and the city park need additional parking spaces for cars. Don't, that might be under. Yeah, but it, it came up under our residents, our engagement meeting, so.
Wouldn't it be governed under the HOA, that, that area?
The fitness park.
What, what individuals are asking for is that they can't drive.
Right, and park there.
Down to the fitness trail and then do the fitness trail.
Right, that's true.
It was designed for ball carts because that was the main emphasis on the area of getting around.
Right.
Not having to use your car, so.
But is that being exclusive to the?
That's what I'm saying, is there space for even us to.
Not from the back end, like across from the church, not from that side.
Cause you got property that goes all the way down to it.
Okay. Traffic light, street lights committee to monitor non-working lights.
It's an FPL function.
Okay. Offer a hotline for citizens to call in. Okay.
With that, that comment at the public meeting was.
Mr. Poppy.
Unresponsive, so therefore they're asking that the city take some leadership in finding a way to get that PNL more responsive. So that's what came up with them.
And it's actually asking for a hotline for citizens to call in the outages, so can we create a hotline?
There's already a hotline application out there.
Perfect.
Where all you do is pick up your phone and do an FPL and say this lights out.
But if we had a Westlake app that could geotag issues throughout the city, that is something that could take a picture of, submit it as a ticket.
But where's it going? Is it going to us to handle?
It's going to you to like, you know, respond and say, all that beat up.
I know, I've. I don't remember the answer. I don't remember the.
More staff, more staff.
I know Miami-Dade County does, but I, I believe the answer was Palm Beach County does not have street lighting districts as far as tax collections are concerned.
Correct, they're, they're county.
Well, okay, that's why some municipalities do.
Yeah.
Cause I know Miami-Dade County had an all compensating one and then it was broken. We, we subseted our.
The pothole.
Our special lighting districts that come to us as a city, so that's why I was.
And then you pay FPL for that.
Right.
The special district, yeah.
Yeah.
Odette, a citywide trolley system?
That will not.
I'm just, I'm just going by what the residents.
West Palm Beach pays fortune for that.
I know, I'm just.
Wait, but are we deciding what to put on there? Are you putting everything that they want?
This is going to lead into is setting goals.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be smart goals with, you know.
What you said, you wanted to be responsive to their.
Well, the trolley won't be a trolley, but it could be a freebie or a circuit.
Exactly, I would throw the freebie thing on there.
Yeah, freebie, circuit, those stuff that we are.
It's a transportation on demand.
With the winds downtown.
I think that's circuit.
It's circuit, okay. Yeah, connects bright line to the city hall and matters.
Yeah, we should have them all present to us one day at, at one of our meetings. Just a presentation.
Quick.
Oh, that's fun.
Quick one.
It's like three different companies.
More out facilities or transportation?
Well, oh geez, I want city council meetings to be FPL. Oh, that's all I see. Did we change our golf cart rules for kids driving or are we under the state?
State statute.
Statute. Fifteen, right?
You have to have a large.
Okay.
It's there, right? We have it.
Cause we still have.
Little park and ride.
Oh, well, Marquee.
That's on, that was on the communication.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay.
How about, hold on, how about the stuff that we were missing? To be a thriving city by definition?
Town center?
Nope, like what, what didn't we have?
Healthcare. We don't really have, besides the emergency room, you said healthcare was one of the highlights. We have dentists. I have two doctors.
Not that we could pressure anyone to do anything, but we know where they stand on any of that owned land that they have over there that they planned on building a big hospital. Has there been any? Communication with the city?
When they changed CEOs, they.
That go up somewhere.
Abandoned and jumped over to the northeast.
So they plan on just holding that land?
I don't know. There's been discussions, but no movement. And it, it may be an opportunity for this council to craft a letter to them saying, hey, you've got this, we've got residents, what are you doing?
Right.
I mean.
So would that go in your facilities? Of your, maybe something like medical center?
Yeah, I, I would say.
That's in our comprehensive plan too, so that would go in. There's not any emergency room.
The owners hotel.
No, it goes under master plan community. Hotel lodging.
Also under the facilities, under the facility section, if the county for the substation is dragging their feet, could it be an opportunity for us to try to get that land as Westlake's land, build a city hall and build a substation into the city hall?
It's part of the original, what's it called?
Part of the original agreement that it would be dedicated to the county.
So, so we can't.
Although.
I mean, if they haven't.
Nothing potentially is impossible.
Right, so if they haven't accepted it yet, it really, the plan could change, the plan.
They actually have the money to build it, but they haven't accepted the land.
But that's what I'm saying, if we partner with them, it could be an opportunity for us to not only save money, but also build it into.
From my discussions with PBSO, they would love us to do the situation like Wellington does, where Wellington built and owns the building and puts PBSO in it.
Do they pay rent back to the Wellington?
I don't believe so. I believe it's part of the services and stuff.
Give us another deputy for free.
Well, especially if we're housing, you know, to Laxahachie Grove area and everything else, you know. It could be a possible contract negotiation tool. And it would keep us within that civic area of the tax collector, the fire department, et cetera.
Does that lake need to be filled in then?
Hmm?
Does the lake need to be filled in?
Can't be.
Okay.
Partially not. Does that partially have to get filled in?
No, it's already been modified to facilitate interconnectivity between the two parcels.
It would be.
The guy's chambers can look at the lake.
Or a nice little city park behind a green area, green space area.
Trail back there.
Walking trail, picnic tables.
Alright, what are we on?
So do you want to put substation, city hall?
Yeah, that's what I was, where I wanted to put it on there.
I guess we'll call it city hall slash substation.
So our, these are, how do you know with the, the strength, the weakness, the opportunity, the challenge?
Well, now we have.
Huh?
No, no.
Oh.
Okay, I'm gonna facilitate now. We have about twelve more minutes of this work. And then what we're gonna do is you're gonna get more dots, and we're gonna start picking some stuff out, and then we'll take break, okay? So. Let's move along. If we can think of any more, are we done here with facilities? Strengths, build on right now, weaknesses we gotta deal with, opportunities to take advantage of, and challenges we are facing that we can avoid.
Works fine right now. Trust the best.
Well, by the way, last night I also corrected the PowerPoint presentation. We no longer have inictors.
And we're not here an extra day or the wrong days or?
I'm sorry?
And the dates were fixed?
The dates are fixed. Oh, you see it on the first line. Yeah, we fixed the dates, but no more inictors. Do blank, uh? Sheets. What comes to mind? Let's see, we still had council review of RFPs on the bike rack.
Post office or zip code?
Zip codes.
We can build that into the city hall too.
You can try.
If there's enough land. They don't need much.
Post office, yeah.
I mean, looking at the one on the southern, you don't need a whole lot of space at all.
I would put on any top facility.
Facilities, I guess.
Post office.
The post slash.
So what about policies and procedures? And then, you know, council reviews RFPs of.
But I, I, have we ever gotten or reviewed city policies as it pertains to our contracted employees on how we expect them to hold themselves and how we expect them, the policies we expect them to?
I do have a few staff reviews.
Do this year.
That all applied to them as well?
August?
I'm sorry?
All of our code of ethics.
Yeah, but I'm talking about individual policies as it pertains to how certain things are done within the city for the city staff.
We call that operating policy?
Operating policy, right.
So I, I don't remember that next, okay, or, okay, operating policy.
Sorry, Dale, I'm new, so I didn't know if we did. That's why I asked the question.
And just, maybe just major, major contract council review RFP.
So should we set a, well, I guess that could come later on when we start outlining it, but set a number.
Contract, cause I don't, I certainly don't wanna do it for every contract.
No, but set a number, but.
So I'm not sure I'm following, so help me.
RFP.
An R, an RFP.
Council should review.
Review.
So that comes into probably procedures.
It's on the bike rack.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Council review of RFPs, is that?
Yeah, but not every RFP. There should be, there should be a stipulated.
We can talk about.
Yeah, we could talk about that.
Let's capture council review of RFPs.
Just making sure I get my priorities.
Those operating policies, it could be a strength, a weakness, an opportunity or a challenge. It can be any of those four.
I think it's an opportunity.
Do we need to define, I know you had said this yesterday, if we're a destination or a bedroom, do we need to, is that?
Then ask that question.
Okay.
I ask a question, are we? What are we?
Well, if we have the locker and adrenaline would be a destination, but we're a bedroom.
And transition to something else, if you think you can, I don't know.
Depends on the land. It keeps going to certain.
But that goes back to the discussion that we had with the, we need the data, marketing and demographic data analysis for the area to see what we could become or can't become.
So is that a?
We could be a destination.
So is that an opportunity or is that a challenge? Cause we don't know what we are, or do we know what we are, or?
Well, it could be.
If we had a vibrant town center, we would be a destination for the seventeen thousand rooftops that surround us.
I'll pick up on that. We did not talk about town center at all, and that was very high on the resident.
So we should put up this master plant community?
Town center.
Town center?
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
Which goes with our scheduling a meeting with Minto to share our strategic plan, I guess. Okay.
We can do a presentation and they can do a presentation.
They need also factor with, uh, tell who we led or just that.
Strategic plan.
Strategic, sharing our strategic plan and meeting with Minto to.
Collaboration.
Collaboration, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Strategic plan. Strategic plan, meeting with Minto.
Yeah, that, that's specific narrowly defined. Collaboration is a little bit broader.
Can we talk about, and I know it might not have been captured in the meeting that the community had with you, but I, from my understanding, there was a certain subset of our community that maybe we're not able to meet it. But youth and family programming, I think the lack of youth and family programming that happens from the city side, and I know it's a cost associated with some of that stuff too, but maybe that could be an opportunity for us moving forward.
That would go with the park with.
Yeah, it's. That would go with the park, yeah, but I'm saying that, yeah, yeah, but I think.
Somebody, can we capture that? Because that was brought up with.
Facilities.
Was it? Okay.
It's not overwhelming, but I think there were two people who mentioned that.
So. Community activities on the city side, cause.
Actually, uh.
Youth and family programming, yeah. I mean, we could.
With mention, youth and family activities.
I wonder if the helipad, when it came down.
Bird report.
Could be, could be morts or drones.
That's what.
Is that what they? Is that what they wanted?
No.
They wanted an actual helicopter helipad? Okay, I was just asking, I'm just trying to clarify.
I wanted for EVTOLs.
That's okay.
Vehicle will take off and land. Was if Westlake's going to be innovative and cutting edge, we need to be able to land and take off helicopters so people can get in and out of Westlake easily.
They're personal helicopters, or they want? Oh, I'm.
I think they're just confusing it with verteports and EVTOLs and urban air mobility.
I've got about three more minutes. What else on operating policies?
Uh, city council meetings, I've heard about them being held too early.
Seven PM.
Because people living or working far away, you're not getting back on towers.
Timing of council meetings?
I did see that in here.
What else coming up of the pages on the wall, we got the bike rack taken care of.
Can I suggest something?
Sure.
Communication with residents. I think communication should be the topic, not just with residents, because I think we do a poor job of communicating our growth and everything else to bring in the economic and development that we're looking for.
I agree.
So I think communication should just be its own topic, cross out with residents, add on to that communication about the data that we're seeing, because one of the things we could do, especially with the license plate readers, is how many cars are we seeing traveling past at a certain point during that time, because the eyeballs of getting that town center here would correlate to that, and I don't know if we do, that could be done on an instant basis today, as opposed to data that was collected years ago. So I think communication as a whole should be more than just with residents.
Yes, and here's another thing that also came out of a community engagement meeting. Communication to the outside world about what Westlake is all about, why somebody may want to live here.
Our image.
Business here.
So marketing.
Marketing, yeah, so marketing to the outside world, so I did hear that quite a bit from community engagement meeting, so the suggestion is, yeah, take off with residents, because it's broader than that. And maybe just add the word marketing?
Marketing, yeah.
Yeah.
I like it.
Now, we know that that's.
Very encompassing, yeah.
But there may be opportunities to partner.
Right.
On that.
And I know we're not here yet, but it's been brought up many, many times. The merging of Sid and the city, you know, being a, um.
Dependent district.
Dependent district. But I don't know, would that, would that fit? Because it's going to happen, we don't know if it's.
Right, right, I second Paul for 30, it will happen within 30 years, but both parties agreed it would happen earlier.
We also have movie theater and assisted living facilities as goes to accomplish over the next three to five years, so.
But did we want to capture the city Sid dichotomy?
That goes under operations, right? Maybe, operations, no?
Because it wouldn't be under public safety.
Or legislative?
Oh, that might be like combining Sid and the city?
City Sid merge, okay.
Volume of facilities?
Facilities.
And then merger of Sid and, and city.
Or is it an operating policy?
Yeah.
I think it's operating.
The facility one, but hang on.
I don't know.
Either one.
Yeah.
Ken's saying it's.
Operating.
It's really an operating policy, because as a governmental entity, Sid doesn't ever really go away. It's a, it's a enacted by the state legislature, a governmental entity, so it never goes away. How it operates can modify.
It's operating.
So it's really an operating, from my perspective, it's really an operating policy as to how the two governmental entities interact with each other.
Okay.
The special district will never go away, you're right.
Yeah.
So city and city merge?
City, cities.
Quite dynamic? I don't think, I think it's dynamic.
We'll know it.
Yeah.
Sid, city currently. If you look at Westlake compared to any other city, Sid is all the public works operations of any other given city.
Right.
The only difference is it's two different governmental bodies running it too. And since Sid preexisted, the city, it remained that way.
Eventually, what, a person will have, a resident, well, or a city official would be also serving on the Sid board at that point?
Ultimately, it'll end up being.
All residents.
Similar to the setup of Acme and Wellington, where the city council sits as the board of, of the Acme Improvement Division.
Oh, interesting.
And then they have the problem of which hat they're wearing that day.
Okay. We may not be done with that, uh, Jack, would you put that one up there? Pick them the dots.
You have five.
Thank you.
Go ahead and mark your five most important.
And then we'll take a, take a break.
Everybody else puts their on.
Are we marking this general category or the individual?
I was going to mark the individuals. Come on, guys, put it on that. Do it right there.
Right.
I need 10 more dots.
So Eric, does, when they're public safety technology, the status, you look like the app in the web.
Now, now it seems, it's not a price over. I think it works in the church.
That's what the PIO is going to. The only big. The only. For, again, taking public safety issues. Just could be something else. Every, that just goes right to two hills. And then we can come live. If we don't get a big question.
No.
No, I'm, I have, I have the same, I have.
Speaking of part of the training.
Or if you're doing, I have.
We've got, um.
It's true. But you could also look at it this way, Mr. Mayor, getting it down to a SMART goal, putting a timestamp on it. Like we're already doing.
Tomorrow.
So what's important? So it's city hall.
Get more if we do the speed zone cameras.
For those of you that are done, we're taking a break if you want to go.
Get another donut?
Well, we can be in one of the tables.
My brother.
But there are similarities.
Well, the thing is, the park is also on the same, the government, that's where people wanted your soccer.
That is so true. Yeah, I gotta give you a.
I'm here at 8:30 and we all got hooked up.
Very close. Actually, when you come, you get 50% off anyway of your first drip, but you can keep your coupon for your second round.
Okay, are we, are we called back to order, we're, we're good? We're, we're, we're rolling.
Go, right.
So I'll call back to order.
Let's go.
Okay, so, um, we have some divergence here. Looks like town center got four dots. Uh, Westlake app got three. Road interconnectivity got three, city hall, substation got three, Sid and city merger got three. Meeting with, I'm sorry, uh, public safety technology got two, meeting with Minto got two. Park got one, council review of RFPs.
I think that's two.
Oh, you're right, yeah, I, sometimes the yellow is hard to see. Um, and council review of RFPs got one. So what I like to do next is to turn these strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges into goals that we can work on. In reality, the goals to be worked on are set by the city council, but turned over to the staff to do. And um, in most of the communities where I've done strategic planning, we have huge staffs. And we don't necessarily have that here. So I want you to be sensitive in the topic of overburdening the organization with what you want to get accomplished when we set the goals. I typically like to focus on six, seven or eight goals for the next two or three year period. I know we talked about, you know, five years, 10 years, 30 years from now, but my preference is that the governing body work with the staff to accomplish three to six, maybe goals over the next two or three years, and then two or three years down the road, it's time to revisit the strategic plan. So let me head you over to the identification of SMART goals, and we'll be doing some more writing based upon where we've got our dots here. And we are going to identify goals. And they're SMART because of the acronym S M A R T. The goals have to be specific. They are well-defined, they're clear and unambiguous. And by the way, I, I work with SMART goals and elected officials all the time, I will help you make sure that you meet each of these steps of creating SMART goals. So I will always ask things like, well, have you defined that? Are we clear and is it unambiguous? But we also want the goals to be measurable. So with specific criteria that measure progress toward accomplishment of the goal. Specific criteria, can we measure the progress? A, achievable. Can it be attained and is it not impossible to achieve? And what you'll find is some of the things are completely out of your control, it may not be achievable for the city council, so then it's not a SMART goal. Is it realistic? Is it within reach, realistic, and is it relevant to the city's purpose? And then, very important, and this one's very tough to do sometimes, and people don't like to do it, but is it timely? Have you set a clearly defined timeline, including a start date and a target end date? So I'm going to leave this up on the screen. And I would like to hear some discussion about what you would like the next three, four, five, six, seven, number of goals that we can set as SMART goals from the list that we have in front of us, knowing that we can't accomplish everything. All right? So yes.
Two right off the bat that can happen pretty quickly, would be Westlake app and a meeting with Minto. Roads are going to be years. City Hall is going to be a couple of years, if nobody like to have a master, but some, I can have technology with public safety that can be done within a year.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So three to five.
I, I'd like to focus on one to three. So who wants to do some writing? Get up here. So Vice Mayor, let's go, let's go one at a time, um, go ahead and suggest one and, and then I'm going to ask if there's any objection to it going up, so give me one. Okay? Anybody object to that being up there? As a goal? Okay. Wait, wait, no, 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 we're not going to leave this one, we're going to work on this one now, so is this well-defined, is it clear and unambiguous? Oh, it's not, why not?
What we're meeting for accomplish.
Okay. So, we need to be more specific about a meeting with Minto. What are the specifics?
Share our strategic plan.
I'd say that's the stuff.
Hold on, hold on, that's one at a time.
Share the plan.
Share the strategic plan.
Which is what we talked about, share our strategic plan.
Now, that could probably be done without a meeting.
I guess collaborating.
I think it opens the door to the other three on that list.
It's more of a conversational type thing, here's, here's what we've designed, we'd love to hear a presentation about what's happening with Minto, thoughts, what's happening. You know, just have a dialogue conversation. Just to open that up, there'd be future meetings.
Okay, so we'll share the strategic plan. Okay?
See how their master plan, and I'm just talking about, yes, share the strategic plan, and then.
Share the strategic plan.
Then I think that's the opportunity to really talk about how do we collaborate and what is Minto's master plan and how does that fit into what we've created as our strategic plan, so it's gonna I think allow us to do both things. And then set future meetings from there. That's it. I think so.
So the goal is to set a meeting with Minto and to share the strategic plan.
And discuss.
Opportunities.
Right, discuss the discuss how Minto's master plan supports the vision of the city or the residents, you know, something.
How the city can work with Minto and help achieve Minto's and the city's objectives.
Can I try and translate that? No, I've lost it, I'm sorry. Can you say it again?
Meet, meet with Minto to. Meet with Minto to share the strategic plan and.
Discuss.
And see where there's some common ground.
Okay, I remember what you said now.
Help in the marketing of developers.
So here's where I wanted to try and translate that into measurable. Demonstrating that the city wants to participate in marketing.
Willingness to participate.
Demonstrate its willingness to participate in marketing. Because, because I heard the word "help" and I'm not, you know, it's hard to figure out what "help" means.
Coordinate.
Well, well, remember, coordinate is not your responsibility. That's the, the decisions that Minto makes is their decisions about what they want to do. You control land use, site plan, those kind of things. But, but it's really whatever Minto wants to do, as long as they're compliant with your rules and regulations and your codes, they can do what they want to do. So we just have to be careful about a public meeting and what that dialogue is between the city and Minto.
So I thought we really just wanted to share our strategic plan and have them really share with us what the plan vision was and how we can.
Of what they can share.
Right, of what they can, yeah, not.
It's NDA stuff, but it's the, it's the door opening to collaboration, is what we said we needed to do.
Right, exactly.
Which, to me, and I'm not trying to push you one way or another, I think once the strategic plan is done, you can just send it to Minto and let them chew on it. And see what they want to do in response to what you say your strategic plan is. And if they want to come to a meeting and have an open discussion, they can come to a meeting and have an open discussion after spending some time with your strategic plan. And if they don't want to come to a meeting, they don't have to. They can't be compelled.
That's one of the biggest complaints from the residents is they don't know what's happening. And they're, I understand, but at the same time, if we can try to build a bridge just to, you know, have a meeting, and maybe it's just that started with the meeting, it's just presenting.
Sharing our plan.
Plan, and maybe that's it. I don't know. And maybe they might say, give it one minute.
And maybe they'll respond back with something.
New ones coming, God, you know, just broad.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what it is. And now people know, like, oh, okay, they're working on stuff. It's the, you know, perception.
There's three more communities. There's five more businesses, general, like we said.
We'll be on the Town Center, but it might be five years, you know, you know, just that kind of a broad type thing.
Or maybe even giving them the opportunity to present the history of Westlake, like I had with my meeting, one-on-one with Carter, and being able to, him to show the ideas that Minto has for Town Center would help.
That's fun, too.
You know?
He did do that, though.
He has, but it's been a while. We've got a lot, thousands more.
Yeah.
So, so far, share the strategic plan, which I think is great, and then invite the appropriate representative from Minto. It's probably gonna be John Carter, but, but whoever they think, invite for an opportunity to share their thinking going forward and maybe what's coming down the pipe.
Strategic plan.
Their strategic plan? Do we know if they have one?
It won't get shared.
Okay.
Okay. So, so it's not achievable or realistic?
How about share their short-term plans?
In my discussions with John and my discussions with the various attorneys and stuff, a lot of it depends on, at nine AM on Tuesday, it's going one direction. By nine forty-five to ten thirty, fourteen things have changed, so that plan is modified tremendously. Or something happens in timing, something happens in financing, something happens in changes. So they're constantly on the move to figure out what products, what things are gonna work. Also, I do know, for example, that it took over three years to get Publix to sign on the dotted line. One of the things that Publix was demanding upfront when they first started was that there be no other pharmacies allowed within the city limits. John said, no, I'm not gonna do that to my other property and box me into a corner. So those kind of things and discussions are going on with these national tenants, national products, et cetera, et cetera, on an ongoing basis. All those things are in play all the way up to the end.
But I don't think the sharing of the general concept of what they got, or what they plan on trying to do at that particular moment.
That, that may very well be, but again, their biggest fear, I think, is being held to that in the long term.
Right, because it could change at any moment. Yeah.
Right, but I think if we're open, honest with the public about, hey, this is their plan today, but it could change tomorrow, it could be an opportunity for them to come forward, too. If we, as long as we push the right information and we're, we're, the expectations are set in the beginning, I think it's understandable.
I agree, but we have to make sure that what, what is said from the DIAS, what is said from Minto is denoted in, hey, this is as of eleven thirty-five per day. This is the general area where we're going, but what it's gonna end up like, none of us know.
And I think the biggest complaint from our residents is when they hit the sales center prior to buying their house, they were told, this is what it's going to be. Not that this is the plan today, and it could change. Their biggest complaint was, this is what I was told. The Town Center will be here, and now it's not. So I think the expectations were not set appropriately from the sales center side to our residents, and now our residents are coming to us for answers. So I think those expectations have to be realigned and focused.
Agreed.
And I don't think anyone ever gave a timeframe for the Town Center Mall, or whatever, Town Center. It was, they did?
Oh, they did.
Oh, so I remember going into the sales center and just seeing the big pictures of what was to come. So I guess, going back to what you're saying, is that still the vision, like those boards that's in the sales center, and sharing that it is still our vision to do da-da-da-da-da, but it may over the next five to ten years before that happens? Like, maybe a broader presentation, not specifics about who, what, when, where, but it is our, it is our goal to still have these things.
What if, after we share the strategic plan, we send an invitation to Minto to provide us with any kind of update they feel comfortable providing? So it's just an invitation?
Yeah. Carefully crafted letter.
Carefully crafted letter. Not putting any pressure on them to do one thing or another. Open invitation, come on to our meeting, and let's see where it goes.
Provide update.
Now, I think that's good. That's measurable, achievable, realistic, and we know it would be timely because the invitation would go out shortly after they get the strategic plan. What if the answer is no? Right. And so you will be doing your job to, what if the answer is no, we're not coming?
We'd send the invite.
We questioned and they said no.
We did our part.
Okay.
Do we put a date by when we share our strategic plan and a date by where we do the invite?
Yes.
Is that specific?
Yes. Um, so that puts pressure on me to finish the strategic plan document. I can't make your July first meeting. That agenda's already out. But I, I will commit to you that it will be available either at the, I don't know the date of the August meeting, but it'll be available to you in advance of the August meeting, if not earlier.
So why, why don't we make it, instead of a specific date, a relative date, two weeks upon receiving the strategic plan we will share with Minto?
By September or something.
I've said September.
Or you just push it to a date for far enough out where we know.
That way.
Either way, it's fine, but I'm just saying.
September.
Yeah, so, so my commitment is you'll have the strategic plan by your August meeting. You can review it.
Send it to them by September.
You can send it to them by September with an invitation, and then see where it goes.
What, I have a question, timing. What they'll receive in August, we won't be modifying after that anyway, correct? It'll be final.
Right.
It'll be final.
Basically, at the August meeting, you could direct manager to send it to Minto with an invitation to come to the September meeting. That would.
Or, or a future meeting. They may not, yeah.
And, question, would it be better, because if they say, if it's strictly just the city council, maybe they might not want to come. But if we say, we'd love to have a little joint workshop with you, where it's like this type of a thing, where we're not up there and they're down here, where this, they might be more apt to come to this.
Well, and that can be part of the well-crafted letter, giving them options for how to engage with the city council. Because candidly, you know, they're a private entity. They may not want to speak publicly about whatever's going on. Because they'll get hammered by the public, and we need to be sensitive to that. So.
They may want our.
That's, that's true. They may want an opportunity. So, yeah, the invitation is there, and maybe with the invitation, you'll give them a few options of how they maybe would like to do it, if they're willing to do it at all. And I agree with you, then you will have met your goal as, as a city council. Um, so do you want to capture August? And I'll talk with Ken as to whether or not he wants me to come to the August meeting and do a presentation. I have built into the, I don't remember if I built into the contract or not, yeah, I built in an option for me to come at the public meeting. You may want me, you may be tired of me. So we'll decide later if I will come.
It's to do the mission, vision, and values.
I'm sorry, say that again? Oh, yeah, yeah, do a presentation to help the public understand the work that you've done. Be happy to do that. Yeah. So strategic plan, no, it's gonna be strategic plan delivery by August. Yeah, and, and possibly a presentation. I'll leave that up to Ken.
I think we do.
You think we do? You want me to make a commitment to do it? Okay.
Not, not to completely change the subject, but our sergeant just texted me back. It was, what are your thoughts on a juvenile curfew? That's what we didn't have.
Bike rack?
Yeah.
Bike rack.
All right, so.
For thirteen-year-olds, seventeen-year-olds?
Yeah, no, I don't know. You're the public safety expert. I'm just asking.
All right, so strategic plan delivery in August.
I think it's good for.
An invitation to Minto with a carefully crafted invitation letter. Okay, so strategic plan delivery in August with, with an invite. Oh, all right, so let's see.
Just put August.
No. Well, this goes down here, really, right? Yeah, so this goes down here. Just, you can put a line down there with a carefully crafted invitation. Okay. All right. Let's see, Westlake App got three, so yeah, although Town Center got four. What do you want to do? You want to do Westlake App?
If we combine App and the webpage together, we got four.
Is Odeck gonna write, or you gonna write? Okay. Okay. Okay, let's be well-defined, clear, and unambiguous what it means to have a Westlake app. I assume, well, no, 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 to have one, I assume somebody has to be responsible for developing it. Or you buy it, or.
Yeah, I'm gonna buy a vendor first.
We need an RFP.
Yep.
Need an RFP.
That's fine.
Yeah, we need to do an RFP.
Okay, so.
Does our code provide for piggybacking or for state cooperative contracts or any of that? So there are vendors that are already on those contracts.
So the really first thing is evaluate possible vendors.
Yes.
I like vendors.
I like it.
Could they incorporate that, the state, the emergency into that? It would be separate.
Separate, separate, yeah.
But we can put them both on our website.
You can.
Okay.
By what date?
Yes, wow, just, thank you, Councilwoman. I was just gonna say, when do you want to evaluate vendors?
How about evaluating vendors by September?
Is, is that realistic, Ken?
Gotta go with staff.
Okay.
Because we got budget to do, right? Budget is what, September, August, September?
Oh, the budget's almost done in draft.
We got time. The development of an app would not take that long.
But a staff is not, guys, it's.
What did it say to me? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty quick. We gotta give staff the opportunity to do it. But I think some of us are going in August to the Florida League of Cities annual. Is there any vendors that are presenting there and stuff like that?
That's where I got this one last year.
So why don't we start looking at evaluating.
It's not us.
After the budget, yes, staff, I know, staff after the budget, because then we could bring back ideas on vendors that we see at the, the convention, and then supply them to staff. So maybe November?
Yeah, no, February, November.
I had it first on January.
Yeah, that's fine, too. I think we need to.
I think January.
I know the man wants to have.
January. Because then you got Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year, January.
Should we come back to the, in January, you know what you're saying? Why don't we, Mr. Manager, what would be a reasonable expectation from us to have you evaluate different vendors if we supply a list of vendors that are possible and then any that you may find by October one?
I think we could probably put together a shortlist by November.
November.
Okay, we'll evaluate vendors by November one or November thirtieth?
November thirtieth.
November thirtieth.
I want to specify what they should accomplish, what the apps are able to do.
Well, that's what it's gonna evaluate.
Let's, let's them, let's them.
Yeah, but I think when you present them, you'll give us a list of.
What, what we'll do is we'll give a shortlist of the commonalities. In other words, the things that you have looked for and has expressed here of wanting to be doing A, B, C, D, and E, which ones do those functions, and which ones have additional functions that are included in them at no extra cost. So we want to cover the basics, then we can give you a shortlist of, here's the five vendors that cover the first five items that you're wanting, and this vendor also has this and this, this vendor also has, doesn't have those two things, but it has these other two things. So we can give you a matrix that you can look at and say, okay, of those, of that shortlist, let's have them come in in December, each one do a presentation, and then we can decide. And what we'll also do on that is look at them, that they will also, all of them be on a, either a state bid or county bid or federal bid type thing, that we can just piggyback off.
So I think we need a step before evaluating vendors. We need to collect. Collect, collect the roster of vendors, and you say you can pick up a lot of them at the August FLC meeting.
September.
So that would be before the November thirtieth. So, so the elected body is responsible for collecting potential vendors and deliver that to Ken by, when's the league meeting over?
Middle of August.
Okay, August twentieth?
By September.
Okay. Now, I think we need to deal with the RFP issue.
Well, I think that depends, that's vendor dependent, too, because we. Well, I think that depends, that's vendor dependent too, because we may not have to go to RFP if a vendor is on a contract.
Oh, I see, okay, well.
Contact and the threshold, if it's a threshold of certain amount, then it does have to come back to September.
I don't know about.
I don't know if it's expensive, you know.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I, the one that was presented to me at the League of Cities thing last year, it's all cloud based and it was a, it was like a subscription.
Yeah.
And it wasn't a lot of money.
No, they're usually, they're usually not what I've seen.
It wasn't expensive and it, I mean, it was everything in one place and push notifications and it was.
And I, I don't even know if the level, the level that. It could possibly get to, would amount to an RFP that we would want to really.
Depending on the value, it may or may not require an RFP, it may just require three bids.
But what I'm saying is.
We just put it on this and if it doesn't require it.
Reviewing RFPs that are, are, you know, big need.
But it may not, it may not even require, meet the threshold.
Exactly, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Can we just list what we need to do and then if it's not required, it's not required, so can we just list?
We, we're gonna go a little bit past twelve before we feed you, so.
Just keeping y'all on track.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what's next, because there was a lot of crosstalk, so I, I didn't capture it.
Be request, if, and if it's not necessary, at least.
How about, how about procurement process?
There we go, like it.
Do we need to come with something next Tuesday to the budget workshop with like, we want to designate twenty-five thousand toys?
It'll be one of the things that I probably already accounted for someplace, but I will make sure it's on your list.
So what about, what's the timing on procurement process?
Well, November thirtieth, I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Because we said January.
I've been trying to get this done.
Right, so December.
Put presentation of vendors, because if we're gonna go through a procurement process, we're not gonna be evaluating anything.
Presentation would be in December.
No, but what I'm saying is, how do we say this is the list of vendors that we're possibly looking at?
Just email them to.
That would be, that would be, that would be staff function saying, hey, here's what we've gathered based upon your input, here's what we've gathered, here's the five that meet your criteria. We're going to bring those to you at the December meeting to look at.
Right, but wouldn't that be, shouldn't procurement come after that?
Yeah, it will.
Okay.
They'll come after December meeting.
Collect this first, evaluate it second and then procurement.
Because it depends on the vendor that we get and the amount that it costs is depending on the procurement process.
Right.
Got it.
So we want to conduct the procurement process in a timely manner. So what's the clearly defined timeline, including a start date and a target end date for procurement?
September through January.
That's to review the vendors, right?
That would be from start, the procurement process would be running from September when you got all the information to us to start evaluation to the actual procurement in January, because they would be presented to you in the December meeting, you would say execute, we would execute between December and January, so they'd be on board by the January.
Yep, so procurement start September and January. You good with that?
Zoe will be working longer hours.
It's gonna be the easiest thing.
Oh, yeah.
That's right, we gotta keep that in mind.
Okay, so, on the Westlake app, I think we've been specific, it's gonna be measurable. We'll find out if it's achievable, it probably is, based upon the discussion I've heard with all these vendors out there. Realistic and relevant to the city's purpose, and we have a clearly defined timeline.
Would it be operational right after it's procured or there needs to be preparation?
I would expect, not having a lot of information with it, I would expect for then thirty to forty-five days, they can be operational.
Okay.
Most of these guys have already got it, by the time they're talking to you, they pretty much have it ninety-five percent designed and ready to go.
Are the push notifications on or are you going to use?
I, I don't know, I have, they may be both.
Sure it's both.
Okay, are we done with that SMART goal? Just talk about yourself, what's next? Are we all, got three? Oh, you, well, yeah, hang on.
Town Center has four.
Yeah, Town Center has four, so probably, but did, did we lose, that, that is, maybe this stuff is all inclusive in the, in the app. We think that's the case?
Yeah.
What about a PIO though? Although it didn't get any votes, didn't get any dots, so.
Although.
Something's been running the website and app.
I think it's part of the, the app, because you're gonna need an administrator, you're gonna need someone to run it, and I think the webpage would also fall underneath.
We're gonna end up with a PIO person.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we need to put that on that one right there, the PIO.
You tell me.
No, I don't think so.
Is it part of the app? You have a PIO person?
I don't think it necessarily.
I don't know if we need to identify with the strategic plan, maybe later on we could evaluate whether or not we need it once, from recommendations from the vendor.
So we can revisit that issue later on.
That's gonna be, that'll be, that'll be a staffing call, depending on how we can put it together.
Yeah.
Because it may be third party that does our PIO, um, manages the Everbridge and the app, along with other stuff. So that's, that, what I'm looking at right now, we're probably gonna have to find a third party public relations slash PIO type firm that can run those three or four things for us at a, at a fee.
Unless we can add an, add eight day to the week, then.
Let Zoe do it.
No. I need to take, I need to take my clerk, I can't do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's gonna take years. This is two to three year. What was the question?
Town Center's not.
Yeah, it's a discussion about considering with Minto.
Okay, so.
Is it we want it?
City Hall.
Why not?
Or does the council want to identify what the Town Center should, should have included?
I think that could be a topic of conversation if Minto.
Is open.
Is open to.
We don't get to say, we can't tell them, we can say, we, we have ideas, we'd love to be like, what we see here in, in this city.
We can, we can pick the color rocks.
One to three years, what can we accomplish in one to three?
At least their space to.
No, I'm not talking about that, but do we want to have a central plaza or community gatherings? Do we want it to have a particular architectural style?
Does that need to be one of our goals for right now? Because again, one to three year goals, meet with Minto, Westlake app, what would be our next goal in one to three years? If you look at this list, the things we put that and that's next to, I, I think it's.
What about the city hall?
Yeah, it's got three votes, City Hall and substation.
And I think we.
That's a hard one.
Yeah, it is a hard.
Talking about land that we.
Yeah.
Oh.
But we could, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to, we don't have to set the goal at building a city hall, but starting the process. Of building a city hall and starting to incorporate meetings as far as maybe transferring the civic location that they have slated for the substation and trying to get people involved. Transferring that to Westlake's control so we could build encompassing one.
And I'm not real committed to this topic, but maybe short term, leasing space that's designated as a city hall.
Could do that too.
The RFPs do what?
Working at that.
Well, okay.
Then that's what we've accomplished, one in three years.
Maybe it means three years.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's do that, City Hall.
There you go, love what we.
So, 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 so RFP then will be one.
What you say is out.
They already be done?
Zoe's finishing the final touches on it.
I mean, that's gonna happen soon.
So RFP.
We'll be going to the.
By what date, Zoe?
September.
I have to go legal.
Can I have a question?
Let's put a date, to October?
Well, hang on a minute, question?
Yeah, a lot of these SMART goals that we're identifying, that everything that we've done so far is within the first six months. So this strategic plan is supposed to be.
One to three.
One to three years. Where are we gonna guide ourselves or what are we gonna use to guide ourselves after this six months is over if all of our goals are done in six months?
City Hall will be a three to five year project.
The roads will be five years.
The RFP and the build out and everything else? Or you mean our own city hall?
Our own city hall, that's your goal.
Yeah, that's my goal, that's what I'm saying, so can we?
The interim, the interim piece is to pick up a location temporarily while you're getting the other.
Multi-step goal, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
You can work on the complete build out of a permanent facility over the next eighteen months without actually undertaking the build out of a complete facility.
Okay, I'm, I'm cool with that, I like it, I just wanted to make sure that we're not gonna be done with our strategic plan in a year and then be like.
Well, what do we do?
WTI, what do we do now?
Temporary.
Lease space.
Lease space. And we'll complete that, it also needs legal review, so let's put a date on it.
To the council, like October?
Well, she said it has to go to legal, so.
Yeah, we can probably, well.
You guys also said that you all wanted to review it yesterday, so that's all.
So that'd be September, probably.
Do we?
Your clerk has an election.
I was saying about.
Yeah. I, I think.
Why don't we?
I think the view of RFPs maybe is being misunderstood, I think what the mayor was talking about was major stuff, and I don't think a lease, a temporary lease for two to three years, say.
It's really five to ten.
Five to ten with an option out at some point, I would assume, at some, some clause in there would give us an option, um, so.
Most, most of the places right now are not looking to lease unless they've got almost a ten year lease guaranteed.
Right, so you do a five with an option to renew another five, so, but I'm saying, like, I don't think that would raise to the level of something that.
I, I had no.
I mean, I don't know, that's just my, that's my opinion, I don't know if we really need to see that.
But be responsible for reviewing the draft RFP for leasing.
Yeah, I think we could stream on that.
No.
But it still has to happen, so we may not review it, but it still has to be.
No, I, I get it, but we're trying to build out the timeframe, so I just want to make sure that, that, that section of our review is not built into the timeframe.
Ways and that we agreed that you all wanted to review.
Okay.
That's, if not.
And so will this leave out city managers?
Yeah. I think staff can handle.
But when can we enter the RFP for temporary lease space?
So, I'm part of spending to go to legal, we're in what, June, July, August?
We give them sixty, well, we give them sixty days to respond.
And we also have our, we're still also on budget and assessment, I'm trying to get them on that flat, so.
I would say probably it would be on council in December.
Sean just told me he could do it in a day.
We, we should have it back by, probably have it back for y'all to look at in December to decide which space, you know, we can, we, we can have it back and saying we're going with space A based upon price and.
You mean the response is back by?
I'm glad the response is back, and the RFP will say, yes, we're doing the lease.
I'm saying that there's buildings available today, that would be, is leasable? Or are you talking about buildings that?
There's three spaces, there's three buildings currently that are out, out of the ground, the spaces that will probably be ready during this timeframe. That's also why we time, asking for space now, because they're going vertical, they have space potentially available, they may have some LOIs in place, but they may look at letter of an, a LOI from one person and then look at for the city saying, hey, that's an LOI for this, the business may or may not be shaky, I'll go, I'll put it quote into the city, because I know that's guaranteed for X number of years, they're not gonna go belly up in a year and a half or whatever.
Right.
So there are three spaces currently out there, actually four, if you go into the, um, Grove Marketplace, I think there's still a space in there. But if you go in that, because there's the Publix Buildings, there's the Westlake Homes, there's the corner building at, uh, Grove's Marketplace and then possibly space in Grove Marketplace, so there's actually three to four properties that could accommodate us, we're gonna give it a shot.
We'll talk about perimeter site as a one to three year goal.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Identify?
Because I have to build that way.
Identify, identify.
Right. Um, what do we do first, um, and have RFPs for architects to design something?
Well, I think we need to identify the lands.
Land first.
Yeah, Ken's gonna wanna talk about it before we're done.
I think we need to identify the location, um, or the land first.
Yeah, we need to get an option.
Uh, identify options of land.
Options of land.
And, and consider giving it an option.
Right.
Okay, so, when should we begin the process of identifying the location?
When is the, um, election period?
In March?
Well, starts November.
Right, starts November, goes through March.
I could, I'd have to start that.
So why don't we start it after that?
Yeah, I think so. April?
Wha- what is the date of the election in March, March what?
Whoever's, you know.
The new.
And then.
On from there.
But. It would be, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be staff's, um, or the city manager, but staff's, um, responsibility to identify those potential land options, correct?
Uh huh.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
She was saying May, she said May.
We, we could give him ideas, of course, but I'm thinking that if it's staff's responsibility by April, I don't think it should be that hard to identify different areas that were by the, by the April meeting.
And remember, we got Minto, we got Westlake app, we got boating, we got.
Yeah, but those, a lot of those are gonna be done already, the app will be done already.
May or may not.
But if we're getting a vendor, it's gonna be.
Our regular meetings, they still.
It's a vendor, it's a vendor, not our staff doing it.
To me, the first thing we have to do is discuss with the major landowner, potential, possible opportunity spots, to see if it works with their thinking as well. Which is what I think it has to occur, from my perspective, week after next, to start.
Right, and, and I agree.
And understanding the feedback that I've received from you all that, you know, from your perspective, you would prefer to have the city hall located more centrally versus the park. That limits the potential locations or opportunities, but I can present that at this point in time, again, because depending on what they're thinking of in different places, we may or may not fit into that plan of what they're thinking, and it may say, oh gee, you know, I carved this out and I've got a, an extra acre and a half that this other group doesn't want, but that's an acre and a half that would be suitable for city hall. So I think I have to enter those discussions with, with Minto and with John almost immediately to see what potentially could come out of it. Um, and then just think about those and see where we can go from there and how they play out.
And location may not be part of the strategic plan, you're, you're saying you can.
Yeah, it's not really.
That is expected right away.
Yeah, it's not, it's just find a, find a home, basically find a location, but this strategic plan, but actually doing it needs to start now.
Okay. But, but you need, you'll need architect, design, build, construction, all those kind of things, which you might want to think about.
I would say wait until after we're into a temporary, so we know whether that amount of space is sufficient and whether we need more in a permanent location.
Great.
So your suggestion is that need to be part of the strategic plan, we're not ready for it.
I, I think our focus should be more on the temporary location at this point.
Are we good with that?
And at most, maybe try to identify a location.
That would be, that would be forward thinking.
Right.
You know.
I would, you know.
See if the location is even.
If we can find an option for.
The city can't afford to buy the land, I'm telling you now.
But if we could repurpose that substation land.
But that's not ours.
Well, that would be one.
I get that.
Long-term land lease. Didn't you say that yesterday? Long-term land lease.
Land lease. Options of buy at some point.
As a potential possibility.
I get that.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. We start that.
We don't even know if it's a possibility yet. But again, Ken says you can start that right away. Yeah. So.
We don't need to turn ourselves to that and don't need to be in the strategic plan.
Okay.
So we, that's.
Are we done with that?
So that's our, that's our goal. Right, okay.
Um, let's be one more and then we break for lunch. Don't we won't? Oh, we don't even know the lunch is here.
RFP for temporary lease space by December.
RFP for lunch?
Yeah.
Notice where these are going.
Yeah, we're done with our strategic plan in six months, I see. Great.
Okay, um. Sid and city merger. That's not gonna be done in two or three years.
Roll them?
Interconnectivity.
That's not gonna be.
Public safety technology.
Safety technology.
Can that be done in one to three years?
The included multimodal expansion. That could happen in three years.
Road interconnected.
But it's also on county thoroughfares. We need cooperation.
We already had them out here and so far they said no.
We have a new county administrator.
Well, go back to the well.
Public safety technology?
The Sid and city man, city merger doesn't just happen overnight.
Right.
Uh huh.
And it would seem to me that the city would wanna do some type of an analysis, utility engineering, maybe economic analysis to see when would be the best time for the city to take, to, um, put into effect the merger.
Well, then we can't do it as a smart goal because we wouldn't have a time.
Well, if there's any studies that need to be done, those could be done now.
But the goal is to, for the merger.
Is it, is it something that the city can even dictate to happen? They have their own board, their own.
Prior, prior to thirty years, it has to be mutually agreeable between the two boards. Until, unless it's mutually agreeable between, between the two boards, it does not happen until thirty years from incorporation.
Okay, fair enough. Well, you're, as a city, as a Sid manager, come thirty years, do you just say, okay, here you go?
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't ever really go to the city. It's still part of Sid. It's just the administration of it changes. It's the only thing that changes. But Sid will continue to maintain all of its facilities in a top-notch condition the entire length and time of this facility.
So the, the point is then that the board shifts from a Sid board to a city council sitting as the Sid board.
Correct.
And the liabilities and the assets become under the auspices of the newly established Sid board.
It's still Sid's, it's still Sid's infrastructure liabilities, et cetera, just a different control board. It was, it's the same thing as any other community development district that changes from a developer-controlled board to a resident-controlled board. The entity is the same. It's just who's calling the shots is different.
So can we go with public safety technology as our, something we can do in one to three years?
So the Sid staff would continue as Sid staff?
Correct.
The decision we made by the town, by the city, sitting as the Sid board?
Correct.
Is there any financial liability to the city in that process?
No.
Is there any financial asset to the city on that, in that process?
No, it all remains different. Sid remains Sid. The only thing that changes is the board of directors.
So when the Sid board decides they wanna do that merger and the city is just sitting there, they don't do any more other than say, okay, well, we'll take it?
Or they can say, we don't wanna take it till thirty years.
Okay, and what would motivate Sid to expedite that merger?
It's up to the board. I don't know, I can't predict what the board is gonna be thinking in any given year, two years from now or six months.
I don't see it happening until build out.
So again, Gary, I think.
It's got it's controlled by Minto.
One to three.
Sid is controlled by Minto.
Beyond the scope.
Once their build out's done and they're gone, then maybe there might be opportunity to merge.
It's one vote per acre or portion thereof. So until they don't have any more acres, they're not gonna give up control of their board.
They're not.
One to three years, back to the.
That's why I'm saying.
Nothing really discussed.
Oh, it is.
Wonderful conversation. It's just a reality. We're getting some understanding.
That's true. Now that's true.
Yeah.
Wanna move to public safety technology?
Yes, cause we can.
That one's achievable, realistic, and it can be done timely.
Hey, what are we gonna do?
We're done. Procure LPR.
License plate readers.
License plate reader cameras.
Do I? Okay.
Procure. The one, the one license plate readers are and those.
Yeah, but how do you get them? Is it with cameras?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
It's.
Nothing that's out there now that's got a new, new cameras?
It's a specialty camera.
And where do you locate them?
On the thoroughfares within the right of ways. So it would be, I'm assuming it would be at the entrance and exits to the city. That's usually where they live.
Inbound and outbound from others. When do you wanna procure the LPRs? Got two of them, right?
We're already in negotiations with PBSO.
We were lucky enough to be selected for a demo program that came after city manager and I toured the real-time, the real crime center.
Real-time crime center.
And, uh, we may have to buy additional ones possibly?
As we expand.
So. So.
When is that going to with that?
Initially, it's been offered two. They'll be coming in probably.
We're getting two for.
Next, within the next six months.
Free, they're freebies, right?
So six months from now? December, January?
Well, so hang on. So if you're getting two, you wanna put them in, see if it works, have the operation reviewed?
Yes.
And then make a decision as to whether or not you wanna expand the program?
Yes.
These are supposed to be like the latest and greatest upline.
Right, but it's pilot. We should go with the pilot.
Is that something we need to buy? Is it, or?
Pilot.
We're, we're fortunate enough to where they're gonna give us these as part of a, uh, beta testing program that PBSO has. But if, you know, we've got other future entrances and exits, we can't assume that we're always gonna get them for free.
There, can I ask you a question about that? If the, do we know, is the beta program something that PBSO already has established and they're giving us license plate readers for betas, or is the whole program for BB, PBSO a beta program? So in other words, if PBSO evaluates it.
PBSO is getting these.
Do you know if they're Flock?
What is it?
Flock.
No, they're not Flock.
They're the other.
Not Flock.
It's a newer, and I can't remember the name of it.
Vigilant?
No, I think it was Axis, something like that.
Axon?
Axon.
Well, once the beta, beta program is finished, do we need to buy them then?
No.
So they become ours.
We're gonna have to buy them, uh, possibly for.
Any new. Right, now I understand that.
They run.
Where did the?
One of the earlier versions, they were about six K apiece, from what I remember. Uh, and then I'm not sure of the ongoing, I can't remember what the ongoing operational cost was, but it was.
I suggest that this be, we need to determine if the wants. Do, we made it a. To expand. Procuring, there's no license plate readers after your. That would be based on. Your. Based on our road connectivity. Well, cause. Until those roads.
Eight months at least to fix that, see how they work.
Yes and no's. And the reason being is I know we identified exit and exit points, right? But we all know that sometimes crime is bred within. So there may be other locations within our city that we may find it strategic to place another LPR camera.
Didn't, didn't one of the HOAs reach out to you? They wanna put in their own LPR?
Orchards.
Yes, Orchards is putting in their own.
We're putting in our own.
Who, who receives the information on these cameras?
PBSO only.
So it's a, it's a security, a policing matter.
There, we, we may wanna look into that because there is also marketing tools that we could receive data on traffic counts and everything else that go through those locations. We will not receive, obviously, alerts on crime, um, but the counts of the vehicles that go through during certain times of days and during certain days of the week could be important for our marketing strategies when we start talking with Minto.
And I.
Just so you know.
Agreed, agreed. And I can, um, and I can also pick up a lot of information from Pacer AI.
Yes, but that's not as accurate as your LPR. Your LPR is a good account.
And he's gonna wanna procure more LPRs after the first of our install. And you said that it'll be six months before.
Mid twenty twenty-six.
Mid twenty. Getting the solar ones, so it's not even like we have to add.
I would say mid twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Bell's block technology. That's just LPRs. That it? I mean, I think it'd be great to have municipal wifi, but.
Well.
Let's leave that alone.
I'm.
Speed cameras in school zones.
That could be considered technology.
Yeah.
But he was mentioning LPRs. That's not an LPR though, right?
That's not an LPR. Um, there are companies out there that do the speed zones that will actually not only as a contract with your speed zone cameras, they will supply LPRs in addition at a location of your choice. Um, and it's vendor agnostic, so they will work with any vendor we want and actually pay for the installation of those extra LPRs. That may take a little bit more coordination with PBSO because your, your school zone speed cameras do require a certified law enforcement officer to enforce. So just so you guys know.
So can we say, start the conversation?
Yes, with PBSO.
And be an achievable goal?
I think, I think the, the goal in a timely, realistic manner would be, um, the conversation would be started when we bring in our traffic enforcement officer to see if his duties could also incorporate the, the enforce, the, the, the review of the school speed zone violations.
What about citywide broadband?
Well, but let's, let's finalize this one.
Okay.
Hold that thought. finalize.
Do we also need to wait until the elementary school is built?
No, cause we could add them later. We could, we could, because we, I mean, let's evaluate the high school. And how about we do it this way? How about we invite the study? Let's invite the company to come in and do a study, cause they'll tell you how many violations you're seeing in that location over a certain period of time. Before we even decide whether or not we're gonna want it. So why doesn't the goal be to invite school speed zone camera company vendors to do a study by such and such date?
And present.
And present.
It's an achievable, reasonable goal. When do you want that done?
To do study. I think I need to write that. Do study.
May twenty-six.
May twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, let's spread out our goals a little bit. I like it.
May twenty twenty-six?
It gives us something to do beyond six months, yes.
Okay. What else on public safety technology?
The only thing about May twenty twenty-six is, um, school's out. They're gonna wanna do the study before May twenty twenty-six. So let's invite them to do the study maybe in March to do the study and then present in May.
Done.
Hey, I'm on public safety technology. This is your robot.
Um, we could, we, we could look at creating the ordinance for the public-private partnership um, for the larger box stores or larger stores that are coming in as far as promoting the public safety. So there is certain cities that do have those ordinances in place. Um, I could send those ideas and then maybe we could draft an ordinance or look at staff, you know, staff could look, work with the attorney's office to draft that ordinance and, and put that into place.
And I think we need to get at least with the attorney starting to draft ASAP so that as things come in, cause you will be having some of the big boxes coming in shortly.
So what's the bullet point for the?
Um.
Create an ordinance?
PDP ordinances.
Is that possible to do for an August meeting? Or we'd have to go to September?
September.
That'd be a first reading then?
Yeah. There's enough time.
September's PDP ordinance.
No, the ordinance higher. It's. We could do it stipulated as a certain size. They stipulate it as any new business. That's, that's up to whatever we want, but, um, so it's basically, they, it requires them to purchase, um, or be able to get access to PBSO or in our case, our police department to the CCTV cameras that are on the exterior of their buildings for more public safety.
Um, the goal is crafting an ordinance. Do we need to hear from Sean about timing?
I mean, wh- whenever you give it to us, give us a couple of weeks, so.
Great attorneys, so.
Okay. Time for number?
So I think, I think, I think the September timeframe between now and September, July, August, we can get it done for the September first reading.
It's actually.
Okay, it's twelve twenty-five. Lunch is ready for elected officials and staff. You don't get an hour today. We're coming back at one o'clock. Okay?
Okay.
Are we done? By the way, are we done with this?
I think so.
Yes. I think.
Yep.
Have to recess? Yeah.
All right.
Calling recess, break for lunch.
We're playing when Paul Dogg is never.
Really?
I said when, when the November council is praying.
Okay, well, welcome back. So I believe now we have, um, done the Westlake app, a meeting with Minto, future city hall, uh, a number of items under public safety technology. Um, we still have three dots on road interconnectivity. Two dots on the park. We had a discussion about Sid and the city merger, but I think we've dispensed with that as being a goal. Yeah, okay. So you wanna talk about road interconnectivity or the park?
It's outside of the one to three years. It's gonna be five years for the public.
Is there anything we can do in the interim?
Conversations. Public with county, something like that.
Who's writing? Odette, you ready to write? Uh, you've already got him on record, right? You got a blue mark?
Isn't there a?
They have a conceptual, but it's changed at times since, probably even since last time they presented, it's probably changed again.
So, road interconnectivity.
Well, Minto, we don't. City would have gotten a little bit more burn.
What would be our part? Cause they, they have to work that out, right?
What would be our part? Because they, they have to work that out, right?
Only because it's in our city limits, but it's outside. It's the county road.
Right.
Give me a line under.
So it's the public, or at least the knowledge.
So what do we want to do in the next one to three years with road interconnectivity?
From the city council urging the county to proceed ahead with the Sixtieth Street improvements.
Uh, city council craft or, or city council adopt. Yeah, city council adopt a resolution.
Sean, is that?
A resolution in support you could do. Yeah, I mean, you can't tell them to do anything, but you can.
I was.
Yeah.
Of support. Of support.
Extension of Sixtieth.
Or the extension of, is it Sixtieth Avenue?
Street.
Sixtieth Street, okay.
Do we need to put?
For the expansion of.
Royal Palm.
Let's do that. Seminole, yeah, because remember we want to be specific on ambiguous.
City council.
To one forty.
No.
Okay.
Just, just to state road seven, it needs to be done all the way.
Okay, so expansion of Sixtieth?
Sixtieth Street.
Construction of Sixtieth.
Oh, right, the, the construction.
Seminole Pratt to State Road seven. Can we also urge them to initiate the portion from Seminole Pratt to one fortieth as soon as possible?
No, because that's a lawsuit, but we can ask ITID to support us.
He's talking about Sixtieth still.
Sixtieth.
Oh, oh, to one forty.
Plus the segment where Minto has the property, but they're willing to, to, uh, dedicate it to the county.
County hasn't. No, it hadn't been conveyed yet.
Yeah, come out the first section.
Yeah, because the way they described it, they're going to do that after they do from one fortieth to one twentieth.
County.
Yeah. Which they don't have that right away yet.
No, they purchased the five, they already did the deal with five properties. I think they're going to refinish those land deals. In county. We could ask maybe partner with another resolution with ITID to support this because they, they want this, right? Because they don't want the backside. They want this one.
Right.
They're going to use the history.
Ken?
Ken?
Yeah, um, they want it, but they want it built their way. I'm not sure how the counties. I think the county is going to build.
We'll just keep it with us.
I, I would just stay as a supporter to the county construction Seminole Pratt, uh, Sixtieth. Sixtieth from Seminole Pratt to State Road seven.
And now, when do you want that to be done?
In the next.
September. August, September.
August or September. Yeah, well, we did not start another bullet point.
It's part of it is the whole part of the system.
So, um, we're going to put down August to September is the timeframe. Yeah, but that, that, it, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I miscorrected you. I thought another one was coming. This gets crossed out. August to September.
Can we, uh?
Put Sixtieth between right after construction.
Because it's not.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't think we were going to do that. All right. So we're going to do.
Yeah, Sixtieth.
So we do have a second.
No, 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 no.
No.
Identifying that first one as Sixtieth, because their Sixtieth was not in there. It didn't identify what road.
Oh, I see. Okay. So where does it go?
Sixtieth, right there.
Sixtieth, okay. So we're good on that one? August, September. Any other road connectivity issues?
Right now, that's.
The other one's still.
Okay.
Those multimodals.
But that's really, there's multimodal interconnectivity. That's not really road. But you could put it in right away.
Yeah, I said it was all mobility when I brought it up.
So it's working with county again.
Still working with county.
Yeah, I read a reso, maybe, maybe even a reso for them to take the sections that are substandard for our multimodal path and increase them.
I'm going to work on it regardless of whether it's a smart.
Well, so help Odette craft, uh, the action.
Resolution to county. Come with the Grove's front edge?
Yes, Grove's in the school.
Yeah.
And it's, it's bad enough in the school. It's all uneven because we trip on it.
So. To the county regarding.
Yeah.
All the way down. What about the streetlights? Are they going in or not?
We've only been working for seven and a half years with FPL. They're all.
Hang on, we're, 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 we're jumping. So a resolution to the county.
Guarding multimodal access front of Seminole Ridge High School and Grove's Marketplace.
MOD AL. Multimodal access between.
Front of Seminole, Seminole Ridge High School, just put S, SRH.
And Grove Plaza. And what happened?
And Grove Marketplace.
Time frame.
This is a resolution. Just for the resolution, same.
Same August, September.
Same time.
Send them together.
Yeah.
August, September.
You do want them to go together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we leave some of the first one? Would you be able to present that at a county commission meeting that go down when it's public comment time and present a resolution? I mean, we do it the right way. First, we go to the clerk's office and that kind of stuff to get it, but maybe we need it allowed.
I'd be tempted to send it to the new administrator and see. and copy the commission.
Okay.
Again, that sets us up as asking the administration to take care of something that's really in their jurisdiction per se to push and give us response back to plans before you go to the commission. Again, that lets him or her with, with her staff put things in motion and or say, hey, we've already accommodated for this, 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 and this. We're here. And then that gives us back information to give back to our public. Doesn't short circuit the processes.
Okay.
Engineering due probably copying.
Yeah, David Ricks. Yeah, David Ricks and group. On both of them.
Okay, have we worked through our list? Oh, city park. Let me share this with you. We did have about, about fifty people come and go at the community engagement meeting. And if you look at appendix B, you'll see almost nobody talked about the city park.
What does that tell you?
What does that tell you?
Think that's a priority.
They don't, they don't know about.
They may want it, but.
It's not one of their higher priorities.
Right.
Interestingly, when I did the one-on-one interviews with the five of you, I heard about the city park.
Is there any data? Do you have any data that will tell us? People who did come, you said about fifty people showed up? Were they like, they represent the diversity of our city?
That's a good question. There was a reporter there. I forget his name. Louis Parks?
Tom.
Yeah. He asked me that question in an interview after the community engagement meeting and he said it was his impression that most of the folks that attended, the majority of the folks were from Crest Winds. Right. And, um, he, he said he did not think younger family types came out for that community engagement meeting.
We should also take that into consideration.
I think we also need to take into consideration too, coming from a standpoint where I've experienced this in the past, where we've done a sixty million dollar general obligation bond project in enhancing all of our parks. Then we went back and looked at the usage of the parks and you'll be very surprised at the limited amount of use that a park gets for the amount of money we're spending. So we have to be cognizant of that too. Um, because not everyone uses parks and it is a very small select set of the community that does use parks.
So another question is, let's just say we never build a park. What happens with that land? Does it have to get returned back to Minto? Does it have to?
It's Sid's.
Oh, it is. Okay. So then what will just be?
It was, it was needed to Sid.
Okay.
Is there something in the city's LPRs that requires a certain amount of parks and green spaces?
Yes, and we're already meeting that with the development of learn me if I'm wrong, Neil, the fitness trail, the amenity center, the other parks, the other open spaces, already meeting those requirements. But yes, that is there. Um, right now, the Sid board is looking at that as we, they get it to the point where they can have parking, et cetera, there. Then they'll open the gates. It'll be open, but leave it as large, open fields, which are versatile, which allows people to go and do all kinds of things at the same time without putting a lot of infrastructure in place that has to be maintained.
To get more funding and more grants.
So you do some things and then you, then you be very selective as to what infrastructure you put there. As Eric pointed out, the maintenance cost of the park. I mean, how many times do you see, drive around where you see tons of parks?
Remember that.
There's nobody ever there. But yeah, you've got to maintain it. You've got to have staff opening and closing it, et cetera, et cetera. So the cost factor is there. So there's a magic line.
We have nowhere to do youth sports. We're sitting with no athletic leagues.
And that's why.
No youth sports, no services for, for children or high school students.
I get that, but we also have to look at, is the park in our next five years or can we maybe possibly table it to the next strategic plan?
Phases of it are absolutely. We, we just got six hundred thousand dollars from Tallahassee.
Right, and I'm not saying we don't.
On purpose.
I don't.
The municipal park.
And that will cover the sod.
Cover the parking lot.
Yeah, and the parking lot. That's what it will cover. Yeah, yeah, but do we call, I, I don't know. Okay. We call that a park? I don't know. I'm talking about the general, the bigger general conception of what a park is. And, and you know. But if that's what we can consider.
Every five years, a phase in a different.
Right, we could phase in something different that maybe, um, I mean, pickleball was exciting. It just started. We don't know what's going to be here in five years.
Right.
From now. It could be stickable. I don't know. It could be stickball. I mean, I used to play that back in the day.
Right, well, that's why I think we designed it with flex, they're called flex tubes. They can be whatever we want them to be.
I'm tripping.
Yeah, you are.
I'm tangled.
You, uh, Jager? Maybe there's something we can do in this strategic plan.
Well, we are ready to.
Well, we start, you know, at the front entrances and then the parking lot. We, do we have to put up the other six hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a match.
It's a fifty fifty match. It gives us about one. Provides one point two of funding that the city will have to work in interlocal agreement to Sid, to pay Sid to build the infrastructure.
Okay, we still got to go through FERDA. Which is.
There's, I think what we're looking at is opportunities, I think for the park.
Now.
What we have to look at is potential funding opportunities that we can seek. Because actually the construction, again, because you have two governmental entities, you have to have both of them on the same page as to how much development, what type of development is actually going to occur. City can't dictate to Sid what they're going, going to build on their land. So you have to have that collaboration, interconnectivity between the two entities to look towards a common goal. I think one of the outfalls of this strategic planning is then this can also not only be given to Minto, but to Sid. So Sid's board can also look at what the city is looking at and thinking of and what Sid has thought of and looked at their board to see where do they match, where they can go together.
I've always maintained that you should not be in favor of raising taxes to pay for this park. And we should, should also not take on debt. So a sixty million dollar capital fund is not a thing that we're willing to do right now.
Well, I'm not saying, I was giving an example of a sixty million dollar project that actually spread over multiple parks and the usage of those multiple parks, which they thought they were going to get, they do not get. So even if we spent a million dollars in a park and we don't get, for the size that we are, and we don't get the usage out of it that we're expecting to get, is it going to be considered a waste?
This whole park thing came about because of public outcry.
And then died.
We were being inundated.
Right, but now it's not.
Going to all these other parks and we're, we're a city without.
Now they have other concerns though, that maybe we could be refocusing some
well.
Budget and monetary things too.
You don't know, but they have other concerns.
Well, we do because they did it.
Size was one group of mostly fifty plus people who maybe a park isn't a priority for them.
The sample size of our.
Survey monkey.
What? The sample size of the people who showed up too. I mean, we don't have, we don't have people getting involved, so we got to go with what we are here.
Like they might not show up to strategic plan. They might show up, they may not show up to that workshop, but they sure as hell sending tons and tons and tons of emails.
So here's my question.
And I've talked to a lot of people too, and park is not on the topic, topic of their conversations. It's more town center, it's more image.
So maybe let's do some.
City hall.
Outreach.
Well, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
If we can do like a survey monkey attached to our website, we can push it out too to our Facebook friends and groups that we know.
Put it on the list.
Let's retake the temperature of the city.
Are you interested?
So that's the first step, survey monkey for interest in a park.
Yeah, yeah. Say, uh.
Or what?
Municipal parks on the trapping block.
Not a survey monkey.
I, I don't think we should gear it towards specifically a park. Let's give them different options of what it could be used for because everyone's going to say, yeah, a park, because they don't understand the financial side of it, of what it costs to build a park and what we're not going to be able to do because we're building the park. So I don't think.
We had a bunch of questions, like, would you be okay, you know, maintaining this through your taxes?
Okay.
Yeah.
They're all going to tax us. No, then we know the answer then. Then we don't have to fight it anymore.
What?
At least for now.
What else could it be? And?
Open fields or.
Baseball.
It's, um, the.
If not a park, what else could it be?
It's.
It's not a.
Right.
The, the, um, Sid has named it, um, Fields of Westlake. Is what's going on the entrance sign.
That's what's going on.
Fields of Westlake.
I could tell you that some of the things that were said, amphitheater.
Yeah.
There's different ideas other than, you know.
Wasn't amphitheater in the park.
No.
Right, but I'm just saying, there's other things that.
There have been a number of things that have been thought of, potential designs, et cetera, et cetera, in that space.
Performance centers.
City Hall was going to be there, the civic center.
Civic center, all kinds of stuff has been theorized to be in there, but
so we.
Nothing formalized to plans.
Eventually the space between settlement and Parkway North and South is no longer going to be a big empty field. We have historically been using that space for all of our community events, including Ford Fest, like we're going to do next month. The plan is to start having all those events at this Fields of Westlake.
I'm not against the park.
Moving the only land we potentially have to have civic engagement and.
I don't know if it said remove it. No one said remove it. I said table it for now. I didn't say remove it. I said do what we could do with the money that we're going to be getting from the state with the match that obviously we have to do. I said, do what we could do with the money that we're going to be getting from the state with the match that obviously we have to do, table it, because we're not going to be able to get anything done in the next three years.
I want to table it, I want to continue to try and get more and more money every session. And continue to pursue grants.
But maybe.
But that's not going to stop, this is not going to stop you from doing it.
But that's what you can put on our, our lists, right?
I think the next one should be.
I'm just wondering.
Investigate funding sources.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We're actively doing it.
First one has to be park interest survey.
Survey.
We did that. That's how we came up with what we were putting in that.
But I think now you're asking, are you willing to support it through additional taxes? You're asking.
I would never.
No, I'm saying for the, if, survey for the residents.
There, there will be, whether it's in taxes or assessments, overall maintenance cost of whatever is out there will be borne by the residents of the city. Whether it's an increase in the assessments on SIDS side, or it's a combination of some increase in assessments and increase in taxes, where SIDS, the city pays SIDS to maintain the facilities that they want. That's part of the interlocal agreement that the SIDS and city have together regarding that infrastructure and other things. So we have to work through that. We need to have a couple of these type planning meetings and stuff with SIDS board and, and the council in this kind of a situation to just sit around and discuss what could be or what we're thinking and where things may go. So that both from the city's perspective and from SIDS perspective, proper planning and forethought can be done before they, before somebody moves dirt or starts to build something.
Does our budget currently have any place in it for the maintenance of a park?
No.
Okay, that's all I.
So it sounds like we need a third one, which is a city that we need to discuss.
Our. Another one.
Yep. We're due to have another joint meeting soon.
Yes.
Let's put some timeframes. Park interest survey. Which like that to go out.
I mean, it comes down to staff, so I mean.
We're already at May.
Well, don't we want to wait till maybe the app is done? So that way there are different modes of pushing that survey out to people, the website.
I'll interject is the funding sources, that really needs to start in September. We need, starting with our state legislator members in September, because session starts the 3rd of January. So.
Well, I don't, but once, once again, I don't think our strategic plan stops anyone from doing that. And we, and you could, you could start investigating funding sources prior to the survey too.
You, you could drop another million dollars in that before you ever started building a lot, quote, a lot of infrastructure. For the rest of the parking, bringing in potential connections for bathrooms and water and stuff like that. You could drop another 1.2 million dollars in a heartbeat and not get past the parking lines.
That's true, it's expensive.
Okay. And the fields are, the field areas are already constructed as fields with drainage. So they all drain, but they're just going to be old, big old grass fields for now. But you could spend 1.2 this year, 1.2 next year and barely get your parking lot stuff started.
I mean, just, just to add some context, the city received, uh, rescue funds of DARPA.
ARPA.
ARPA, forgot to say something else. Uh, American Rescue Plan Act, there was what, 700,000?
724.
700,000 or so. And we were able to, it's one of those, if you don't use it, you lose it situations. And we were able to move that money, which could only be earmarked for certain things because it was from COVID. And that's how we built, that's how we got to where we are today on what's been done on the park. So since day one, we've been very conscious about not using taxpayer dollars to pay for this park. Now we, you know, we grabbed a $600,000 appropriation from Tallahassee that was no easy feat. I mean, we're the only one who got money for a park.
So Dale, at, between the park and the city hall comment from the, from the citizens, what gained more traction?
City Hall.
City Hall. So why are we not going to Tallahassee and fighting for city hall money currently as opposed to fighting for park money?
I don't see them giving us money.
They did for other cities. And I could guarantee you they did.
Something we could ask, ask Musin.
Ask for both?
Uh, or ask him to look into it at least.
We're in a brand new building, I could guarantee you they did.
Can you give us examples of those studies?
The one I work for.
Is that who you're fighting about? The airport?
No, mine are gardens.
No, I don't, okay.
And, and I still think city hall. Go where we have earmarked it for, which is in that park space.
One out of five. Everyone has their own.
So don't we need to get, dig down into whether or not this community has an interest in, uh, having a park, paying for a park?
Yes.
Accidentally in a park.
Priority is a park.
So, so, so let's find out at first if we need to spend any time on this.
That's what I feel, because if we, if nobody's interested in it, then I don't know, waste my time.
There'll be some that are interested, but, but if they're not a huge outcry.
90% of the citizens say, no, we don't want a park, then that's the answer.
So let's find that out. So when do we want the survey drafted, sent, returned, tabulated, reported?
See, by October.
Again, I think we're already to May and June. We have some things. So are we June, July?
Work is varied between now and the first of the year.
Yeah.
She's just moving in. Is there a third party that could do it for us?
Well, survey market, I can do it. It's not like I don't.
90 days?
So that's September.
We have no September.
You can go reverse. Let's see, I go over November to give people the snowbirds time to get their fountain. Get their input.
Good.
But that wouldn't stop anyone from getting email. Right, to their.
But then you would take Westlake one green.
Anything for the operating.
Once we were suggesting with session, you've got to start investigating legislative fundings versus in its emperor.
We can do that for the park and, uh, if, if there's money potentially for a municipal building. That's what we need to start, because they need.
And our, our, uh, our lobbyists will hand them both of those. So you look into the FERDA grants, we can. Uh, trying to get more money for the park appropriations and also capital improvements. Civic buildings.
At the city SIDS meeting? It, it seems to me, uh, some of the first two questions are kind of answered, you don't need the third one answered.
We have a city SIDS workshop.
Oh, that's right.
Twice a year. Why, yeah.
Whenever we can schedule a meeting.
July, we have, um, Austin LPMB. July, not, not LPB, just PMB. No.
When's our first comp plan?
I've got 40, so we'll check on with that. So that, that's going to be for our slot. Okay, it's going to take about 5:30. If we have a PMB, that's 5 o'clock. So, just my pockets.
Oh, this is a.
Well, my pockets is going to be that, because you guys are going to be.
Gone.
Yeah, yeah, we just have one week. Unless, unless you do it, 10 days are a council meeting.
Those are the days we're filling up and we've got to coordinate with this, this venue.
August could be the best, because August doesn't have anything budgeted.
Correct.
That's, that's one of the one restrictions, but.
Let's set it for August then.
What's the purpose of meeting with SIDS on the park issue?
Ken, you want to talk? It's mandated to do that.
Sorry.
Do you want to?
The purpose of meeting with SIDS for the park?
Look, it's a combination, it's not just the park, it's the, the agreements and stuff in the charter requires uh, annual meetings with SIDS and SIDS, city councils to look at how the two impact each other, what the game plan is, what's going on, how it can be accomplished. So it's kind of a, it'll fall out really nicely with this strategic plan into the next thing, because then SIDS and the city have something to talk about and say, how can we get there together?
Right, right. Why is it on, on a park?
That's one of, that's one of the big elements that has been pushed of, hey, the city wants a park, we want to do it, we're getting money. And SIDS, SIDS needs to know, what are you thinking, where are we going? And jointly, what is it going to cost us to operate and maintain?
So they can budget it and?
So they can budget appropriately as well.
Okay.
But we won't have the park interest survey done until October if we have the city SIDS meeting in August. So, so we don't know what our community sense is on park.
But at least we'll have the fact that we're getting the first piece of parking stuff and entries done. If we get more funding, we can do the next piece.
I see.
And then, and then what the, what the next phase could be without getting deep into infrastructure, uh, vertical infrastructure. Because if you have parking and parking lots, et cetera, you have access, then you have open fields. When people can go out, they can do pickup ball games, they can do soccer games, they can fly kites, they can do all kinds of stuff in the area.
Kick balls up there.
And it's passive, it doesn't cost the same thing.
Yeah.
Also with them doing the 1.2 right away, we can have something to show the state legislature, look, this is what we did with the money you gave us. We want to continue this and keep it going.
Ken, is, uh, is SIDS looking at doing any kind of, uh, like fishing safe areas in this, in the city? Since there's all this talk about fishing right now?
Potentially.
Where, where might that go?
That would be in the park area.
Yeah, they said they were going to design the lakes for that.
You know, potentially, potentially that, potentially that would be part of it. Um, there's been some discussion on the SIDS side of if we did something and designated an area, but we would put it in a park.
Legs that doesn't have houses all around it.
Correct.
So that would be a perfect place.
It would be probably towards the south end of the property there, um, where we would set it up.
Why is SIDS retaining the ownership of the property? Why wouldn't it become city?
Because it was deeded to. Again, it's another asset, same as the roads. They were all deeded to SIDS. In fee simple.
No, I understand it was deeded to the city, to, to SIDS. But at this point, since we're doing most of the improvements, we're calling it a city park, why wouldn't it then be transferred over to the city?
That's a discussion for SIDS legal and city legal. Because again, the city wants it built so the city can spend money on it. But the bottom line is, it's SIDS property. SIDS could say, no, we don't want your money, we're not going to build it, we're going to leave it as such and such. And they have the right to do that. But in the interlocal agreement, there's a cooperation statements of working together for the benefit of the residents. So that's that fine line that we have to negotiate between the city council and the SIDS board.
So maybe that should be another task.
What?
Have the ownership of the parks transferred over to the city.
I think Ken just said that that's never going to happen.
I doubt if it would happen.
But it can be a discussion that does meet.
Yes, it can be.
Parks, what, 75 acres? Or the, the tract?
Yeah, a little over 65 acres or so.
How much of that is lakes?
I forget. Isn't that usable, probably close to 50 acres plus.
Nice, 20 of the acres would automatically have to stay SIDS ownership regardless because they're lakes?
I had, I don't know the breakdown.
City of.
It's worked for the city legal.
Yeah. I'm just, I was just asking questions.
But again, it, it comes, the reality comes is when for everybody to understand that when the city was incorporated, it was never envisioned that the city would really own any infrastructure. The infrastructure, had we not, had a city not been formed, the infrastructure still would have been SIDS. Planning and zoning, building permits would have been with the county. So that's really the only function that the city really comes into play is building, planning and zoning. That is their function. Everything else within the limits of the boundaries is a SIDS function, which SIDS is by statute. That's their job. So the only thing that SIDS couldn't, if SIDS could, if SIDS was like, um, Reedy Creek was, there would not be a city. Because Reedy Creek had planning and zoning and police powers as well. But they were the only district in the state that had it at the time. Reedy Creek no longer has those, they've been stripped. But if we, if the district had those powers, the city would have never existed. It would have been development district owner. So coming to grips with the fact that the city only has a small piece, everything else is SIDS under a different government entity, makes us totally unique from any other city. So as we talk to other cities or look at what other cities are doing, a lot of those things do not apply to what we have. So we have the bigger challenge to navigate that fine line as to what our needs are, our operating parameters are as a city, working with SIDS, to have two governmental entities coexisting over one chunk of.
We gotta play well in the sandbox. The, the other park, the fitness trail is owned by SIDS.
Yes.
All the other, the dog park.
No, that's a Minto thing.
Yeah. What is getting?
Good show.
Property's small.
So assuming the park gets built to 100%, will it then be SIDS that's going to maintain it?
Yes.
And in order to maintain it, they'll need to update their fees to each resident?
Yes.
To cover those costs?
Correct.
And not the city?
Correct.
There should also be a lot more revenue by then, right? From other sources, like everything that's built.
Everything, everything that's built pays into the assessments into SIDS.
Right.
And yes, depending on the cost and the number of units, it all gets spread about.
Yeah, it's all balancing your budget, so.
And, and regardless of who has ownership of the park, whatever the park becomes, majority of the cost is burdened by the residents. In either their taxes or their assessments. Regardless of ownership, regardless of what you build. So as we were talking earlier. As, as we're talking earlier in our thing, our stewardship is, do we build on purpose something that costs a lot of money to, to your point, maintain? That is underutilized by our people who are paying the bill? Or do we, the prudent stewards, build what's necessary to benefit the residents mostly? And yes, it'll benefit outside people as well, but at minimal cost to the residents over the long haul.
What about, what about considering a public private for the park? Where we lease it to somebody who does that, who can profit off of it?
We've.
And that pays for the maintenance.
Well, I don't know if we can, because that would probably be SIDS that would have to get into that.
SIDS would do it.
Right, no, no, leasing that's.
Yeah, I'm saying whoever can consider the 18.
I'm.
But there's, there's.
Over the years.
There's all kinds of, my, my goal is to provide the services to the residents. Who have been desperately asking me for it. How it gets paid for, we have to do it fiscally responsible way, which is why I've.
Correct.
Been a huge component of not using our money to pay for it.
There, there are organizations out there that will do. a public private where they will construct and operate for a fee over a certain number of years. Most of those that I've looked at so far benefit the operator, not necessarily the residents. I'm sure eventually there'll be somebody out that benefits residents, but I haven't found them yet. So, but we've been looking at it. At least I have been in contact through the last six or seven years at a number of different organizations. That's where had the ISTF thing come in, that would have been the ideal, because they were going to invest upwards of $30 million in the park. Long-term lease. They were going to operate and maintain.
Was that on the tractor sale area?
No, it was the park. They were going to be over where the townhouse was in the church and south of the church where they were going to be there. Um, had that come to fruition and not get wiped out by COVID, it would have cost the residents of the city and the district basically zero to have all kinds of facilities and programs being run by a third party. And the catch on that was they wanted like 15 exclusive use days a year.
And it's all people on it.
But COVID hit, went south, lost. So now we have to go a different, different direction.
Begging for money from townhouse.
Yeah. Sorry, for the longest.
Very educational.
You good on city park for now?
Yep.
What are we missing? We're, we're coming to the end.
Because it was two dots.
No, I mean, oh, that's very old today.
Well, my question was really broad question. I mean, even if, you know, we thought of something over lunch that we didn't get up on the charts. What are we missing? Then we're all getting tired. Are we good for the time meeting, you think? Alright, so if you can see these, um, Westlake app, meeting with Minto, city hall, public safety, technology, road interconnectivity, city park. We'll back and take a look at our vision and our mission. Is this all doable? We've been in our vision and our mission. Does this help us over the next one to three years? Meet our vision and our mission?
Yes.
And are we missing anything at this point? Well, we're tired?
I don't know if we're missing anything. I think you could identify where each piece fits into.
That's what I want you to do.
One of our missions or vision. So obviously, I mean, if you look at the interconnectivity of the roadways, that would be going along the thoughtfully guiding growth and
Public safety.
Public.
And also enhancing the quality of life for people that are trying to get east to west and what the case may be. Public safety is an obvious one. Um, I don't think we need to really get into that. The city hall, the RFP for temporary space is also thoughtfully guiding growth. And it also resonates to making residents proud to call us home because we will have an image or, you know, start establishing our image for the city of Westlake. Um, anyone want to pick up or should I just keep going? The meeting with Minto is obviously going to be, you know, the thoughtfully guiding growth, making sure that we're, you know, being able to relay what our plans are for the growth of the city and what our vision is of the growth of the city to the, the majority of the landowners. The Westlake app is, is going to increase the quality of life and be able to also increase our responsive leadership abilities that we have with the city and the residents. And then city park is also guiding growth and increasing the quality of life. I don't know if I missed anything.
Anybody upright? Did we miss anything? For the block?
I think it answers a lot of things that both all of us have brought up and the community. There's a lot of, you know, the road, the city hall, you know, Minto, what's happening with Minto and, you know, you know, you know, down the park area.
I'm sorry.
The Westlake app will benefit.
No.
Yep. No, that's good. They were asking for.
Mm-hmm.
Poorly. I mean, if we can get all this done in two and three years, even one to three years, that's great to get six things completed.
Yes.
Yeah. Comfortable? Did I miss something? Did we miss something? Um, I'm not going to do this slide. Two, three, four, five, six. I usually ask for five. And actually many of these have got multiples in them, but I, I believe this is enough. The time being. Alright, we don't open up.
Kill the staff.
We don't want to kill the staff, although we've tried. We're getting close. I like these, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Just the manager, you better not steal, steal that last crunchy one.
No, you get the crunchier. I went with the chocolate chip.
Alright, so. We asked me to put in final public comment at this point.
Okay, I'll do that in a minute.
Oh, let's see. Yes, you asked for final public comment after we did smart goal, so.
Well, we asked for public comment. The final public comment also has to stay.
You're right. Public comment. I didn't change the slide last night.
That's right.
I have, I, I guess.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
We have no public comment cards.
Is there anybody? That's public, who would like to come up with a comment?
They want to share.
Anyone?
Yes, they want to share.
Looking dirty for basically.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jim August. I'm at the I, I, I'm at 4654 Woodland Way. I have been living in the community and the, for the past three years and I'm, I really enjoy. And I want to thank every one of you who has put in your name to serve us. And the gentlemen who really helping us to put a plan. And I, my name again, Jim August. I'm a realtor. And I deal in commercial. And I do understand the dream, what everybody would love to see in the community. But we have to be conscious. We are limited and a lot of the infrastructure and also a point of destination to offer for someone to, for a business to come over here. I know right now the tax the community going to pay is the one who's probably going to burn all the thing that need to be done because we may not be able to have a, all the fit you that we would love to offer to people or people are asking. I.e. good restaurant, a theater. Those things going to be pretty challenging to offer. And for a business to come this way, they need to see where the money going to be coming from. Eventually time will help out because we don't have infrastructure east and west. And north and south is pretty limited. So eventually because of the, what the community offer us for homeowner or retiree, the affordability, we probably have to bear it and do what we need to do. So I don't know if as a, our trainer today, based on his experience, if he has anything he can help us to try to see how we can bring businesses who can help us to alleviate the cost of what need to be done. And I do understand we do need the facility for our councilman, the mayor and the staff to work. That's definitely is needed. Maybe the money that we have from the state, if we can probably buy the land, put it there as part of the future five years, six years from, from, from now, we can build the city. The park is needed, but we already have a lot of open space in this community. I don't know if a park would make any sense. That's my two cents. And thank you. And I really enjoy it. And I would love to work with everybody and I'm out there to volunteer to happen in any capacity possible.
Thank you, Mr. August.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comment?
Yes.
I've been waiting.
Hello, my name is Farah Lebed. I'm at 15769 Key Biscayne Lane. I'm part of the Cressman community. Been here for almost two years now, but was pretty involved with Westlake a year before that, as I was getting excited and prepared to move here. Um, I first wanted to thank everybody on city council, city manager, city attorney, Dr. Sugarman, the staff. Um, it's been really nice to be here the last two days, seeing all the effort put in, all the thoughtfulness around what's going to happen and what's the future of our city. Um, I've been part of a lot of strategic planning meetings, so I will say this has gone pretty smoothly. It's been pretty incredible and you guys are moving at a pretty good pace. Um, I just wanted to make a couple suggestions, if that's okay, or comments. Um, the first thing is, so I attended the community engagement meeting. I was there for the entire time. And I know it's hard sometimes to translate sort of what the intention or what the sentiment was during that meeting on paper. Um, you guys captured, you did a great job, by the way, capturing pretty much everybody's sort of sentiment. The only thing I kind of wanted to touch upon, because we talked about it yesterday, but you guys drilled down on it a bit more today, which was the Minto city council, um, connection point meeting and potentially just sort of sitting down with them. One of the things that I think, just taking a 300,000 foot level view on it, I've, one of the things I noticed, and that's pretty much because I feel like I'm pretty engaged in the community as far as I'm sit on the first residential and only residential board seat at Cresswind, but also I attend the city council meetings, whether if I'm traveling, it's virtual, if I'm here in town, I'm in person. What I noticed is a lot of the questions and a lot of the comments from a lot of the residents, whether they're new to the community or have lived here a long time, I don't think they quite have an understanding of the relationship between the city council that this is privately owned land and what, what is within the bounds and control of the city council versus the developer? So going back to the point of communication that we're talking about, whether it's an app or emails, um, I think there needs to be a little bit more and maybe, you know, you probably feel like you guys have already said it over and over again, but a lot of these questions could have been answered, and I kind of mentioned it in the community engagement meeting, if they understood that a lot of their desires, hopes and dreams have nothing to do with what city council can do. It has to do with sort of engaging the, the landowner. So one of the things that was brought up, and I think you guys kind of talked about it, but it didn't completely get cleared up in this, this strategic plan, was one of the suggestions was not just having a meeting with the landowner, which I think is fantastic, and having them even if they're willing to come to a city council meeting and sort of give an updated presentation on where they are currently with everything that's going on in the world and the economy, but also potentially if they're willing to do it, having a strategic planning meeting between city council and the private, the, the private landowner, not because you guys are going to have any sort of, you can't force them to do anything, but you can maybe say, look, we're taking now a survey. Our community is now being built out. We have more people people here who have wants, needs. Is there a way we can have a win-win here where you're able to bring in who can benefit this community while also still making a profit and running your business? So that was the one thing that I think just sort of, if there is a way to do a strategic planning meeting between the city council and the landowner and Sid, that would be amazing. Um, what was the other thing I wanted to, oh, the park. Do I, do I have to come back? Is that okay? Okay, sorry. Regarding. Okay. Regarding the park, the only thing I wanted to ask, and I'm only bringing this up because I can tell that every single person here really cares and is wanting to be thoughtful about how we approach it. I think what would be great is drilling down on when you guys send out that survey or the survey monkey or what, however way you're going to reach out to the residents. I think it would be great to, I, I've spoken to a lot of residents outside of just Cresswind, which is 55 and over. I have a lot of friends in the other communities, a lot of young families. My sense is that it's not that the park isn't a priority. I think the park didn't come up as much during community engagement because there's other priorities right now that's on the forefront of people's minds. And I think what's happening inevitably is when a mom and dad or when a family goes out to Wellington to go do all their grocery shopping and all the errands they have to run, then they're inevitably inevitably using that city park for their kids because they're not doing everything that they normally would be doing in Westlake as we're building out. So I think maybe bringing up in that survey, what would be included in the park? To sort of hit what's important to these community members, right? Like there was an amphitheater, they wanted a city hall, all those things that could potentially be used on this land that was granted to us. Um, but bringing it up in that way, instead of just the idea of this is a park for just a sports complex or for kids to run around, because it is an important thing, but I think it's on the back burner for a lot of these residents. But if they can see the full picture, that it's getting them a little bit more than what they thought they would get out of a park, I think that's another way to couch it versus just, do you want a city park? That was just a thought. Uh, the last thing, sorry, can we go back to vision and mission? The grammar, I know I have no say in this. The grammar person in me just wanted to clear off one quick thing. Can I please? That was the only last thing. On this one, I think it's great. The only thing I would recommend is can we put an and? Because it doesn't, it doesn't sound, it says, Westlake will be thriving, inclusive and sustainable. Westlake will be a thriving, inclusive and sustainable city where innovation flourishes, safety is foundational. And then it just goes, and there's no like, and a community where its residents are proud to call home now or a semicolon. There's just something grammatically that feels.
Whatever you guys decide.
Yeah.
What would you prefer, Farah?
I would prefer and. I don't like the semicolon because most people don't understand what a semicolon even represents. Um.
It's called responsive leadership.
Sorry, yes, thank you. And I already know you guys decided as a consensus about the will be. I will just make the little point and, and counter argument. I've done a lot of vision and mission statements in my work. I love the idea of it being strong and forward and saying it is, because that is our vision. Our vision is our city is and will be a thrive, but saying will be feels sort of like the same, same thing when we said a sense of ethical behavior. I know I have no say in this, but I've been dying to say it. I just think, I'm just speaking as a resident. I want to stand behind our city and be proud of it, and I want our city to know and say, we are a thriving, inclusive and sustainable city, not will be, we're trying, we think will be, we are.
Is there anything wrong with you both? Is and will be?
I just think leading in the first sentence as will be kind of already sends, like, it's just kind of like when we said we think we're going to have a sense of, like, being ethical or sense of stewardship. It feels. Sorry, I just thought it was stronger and I understand the argument made that we're not there yet. I completely understand. But this is the vision. This is what we're manifesting to be. So I just think saying is is a lot stronger than will be. That's just my two cents. And then on the mission, last two cents? Was it, was it the mission? No, it wasn't the mission.
I like, I like is. And when I pulled up the definition of thriving in terms of municipality, we checked every single thing on the box except for a hospital. But we have an ER, so it's like, you know, it was like one little thing we were missing. So we're pretty thriving.
I think it portrays confidence that this is what we are versus we're trying and we may get there. We are there, we're getting there, we're going there, but it just, I don't know, it gives a sense. This is going to live in all of our documents on everything. You saw how everybody probably reacted to the West Palm Beach one or the other, like, it does set an idea of what is behind, the people that are behind writing this, what they think or how confident they are about the future of the city.
We can't take a vote because we can't take any actions.
I know, I'm just putting my two cents.
I liked is, it got into semantics and then I stopped caring because it was so like bickering it. I liked is, I'll settle for will be. But I liked is, that was my first choice. So. So.
I liked it.
Is and will be.
I, I think that convolutes it.
Yeah, I think it muddies the water.
Say what you want.
I agree, he agrees.
I want it to be is.
You agree, right? Us, the peanut gallery, your constituents agree. Sorry. And then my last. No, no, no. And then my last quick grammatical thing wasn't on the mission. I'm sorry, Zoe. It's the core values. Sorry. I think it's the third, second line. We will be ethical in all our efforts, not all of our efforts. It just sounds really clunky. I'm sorry. That was it. I think PowerPoint also didn't like it, or whatever system you're using, did it also agree? So.
I'll allow it.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, took so much time, but just wanted to.
Thank you so much. Is there any other members of the public? I see council back there. Any comments from the rest of the, uh? No? Okay, closing public comment moving forward? Yeah, we did a save? Great work. So I think we're at final public, uh, sorry, final comment. Final council comments. I'm getting tired too. It happens. I'm going to skip final public comment. Right. And we'll move on to final council comments, starting with. There's an order.
I have no comments. I thought that, well, I thought this was a great exercise. Learned a lot. I think it was, it helped us really get a clear vision for what we're going to be doing to support and grow our city over the next three to five years, hopefully. So thank you for the opportunity. You did a great job facilitating us. Thank you all for the great lunches and desserts and. That's it.
Other than thank you Dale for your time and thank you for the community coming out and spending some two days with us. I'm sure that wasn't easy on y'all. And, you know, I really appreciate the comments and the cordial interaction that we had with each other. As some of us are passionate in other areas and some of us are not as passionate in others, but I think we're a great group of people to work together and I'm, I'm really happy to be part of it, so thank you.
Councilman Warner.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to thank Dr. Sugarman. He did a very good job getting us all together on the same page or six pages or whatever it is. I think we have our work cut out for us in the next few years. I appreciate having the opportunity to collaborate with the council members. We don't, really don't get a chance to do that. And I think this is very helpful and we probably should schedule this again in another couple of years.
Thank you.
I've been to everybody else's thing, but also it's great to flesh things out and I also appreciate when we have workshops, it's great that we can just talk freely and we're not so much on stage with the bias. And thank you residents for coming.
Yep. Alright. I will say thank you so much to Dale. I truly appreciate all the hard work we did on this and I know it was that. So thank you so much. Thank you very much to staff who are here for this weekend with us. They are the real MVPs. Whole operation. Really want to thank my colleagues on the council, like, to echo, we don't really get this opportunity, this kind of like informal atmosphere to really, you know, hash it all out and throw lobs back and forth at one each other. And I think it's really, really productive. And I think it, it really allows us to see a different perspective. So thank you. Thank you to the two wonderful members of the public that showed up. And I'm very, very, very much excited after four long years of asking, that we will have a Westlake App. And on that note.
Well, Mayor, may I ask for a moment of personal privilege? Just want to say thank you to the City Council and the staff for giving me the opportunity to do this strategic planning session. And I, I want to wrap with thanking you for being fully engaged, listening, participating. Not one time did you say I disagree, which was great. Please use that going forward in your public meetings. I think that, that's always helpful. And I'll wrap by saying that I will have the, a final report for you on all the work that we've done for your August meeting, and Ken's already asked me to come to that meeting and do a presentation on vision, mission and core values, and maybe anything else that comes up as a question. So I'll be at your August meeting as well. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this. I've been doing it for a long time. And this has been a fun one for me. I think you've done great work. You really have, and you're to be congratulated. So thank you.
Thank you to staff for all the work you did to put this together.
I would, I would, I would have one statement. Thank you all. I've enjoyed this and at the same time, you gave us a heck of a lot of work to get done, so. But at least we've got a direction to go, which is better than kind of shooting in the dark to figure out what's the most priority. This really helps Zoe and myself and the rest of us plow the road to go in the right direction for where you're seeing we need to go. And I thank you for that.
Yeah.
Housekeeping, do we have to keep this?
Yes.
That's yours.
Oh, they're ours.
Remember you said it's public records, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're insured.
Still public.
I didn't write it.
Write it mine either. I'm like, you can't tell. Thank you.
Alright, enjoy your weekend, everyone.
A lot of clean up to do, unfortunately.
I think DJs.